It's called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Alex Montero to do the invocation tonight. And we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember David Patterson.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for allow us to get together to do the business of the City of Hawthorne. Bless all our employees, the city, the City Hall, the police department, the firefighters and all the people who are on the business. We pray that this COVID-19, we begin to see the end of the light, the end of the tunnel. And we pray that everyone out there would have a safe and healthy holiday. In your name, we ask for this meeting to be productive and say amen.
Begin stand, put your right hand over your heart, face your nearest flag and repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Okay, so we're gonna just establish the rules of decorum for the meetings for all council members, for myself, anybody out there. So, in order to speak, you'll need to request to be recognized by the chair, which is myself. So, the statement that you will use will be through the chair. Okay? Everybody's aware, but we just need to make sure that everybody follows that. When somebody is speaking and has the floor, there are no interruptions until that person finishes speaking. And then if you would like to speak, and if there's the appropriate, if it's appropriate at the moment, then you will be given the floor. So definitely, we'd like everybody to just follow that, listen to the issues, let's debate the issues. And keep away from any possible thing that sidestrikes from any personal attacks or discussions, okay? And I have confidence that my councilmember colleagues are excited to get going. There's going to be spirited debates at times. There's gonna be, I sense there's gonna be lots of agreement with a lot of the policies that are set forth and a lot of support for a lot of the ideas that we have amongst each other. So I'm really excited to get started with our councilmembers from before and our new councilmembers. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 5494.3, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Any, what's, what's the report?
So we did not receive any.
No, not today?
No, we received some for the next meeting, that's it.
Let me just take a quick look here. Okay, but we do have a public hearing?
Yes, we do.
And that's, that has its own separate communications, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, may we have your consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have ten items on my consent calendar for your approval. Staff has pulled item number twelve from the agenda. Item five, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, and the regular meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings, resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, finance director requests approval of warrants. Item ten, resolution number eighty-two forty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting an amended conflict of interest code containing revised designated positions and disclosure categories and repealing all previously adopted conflict of interest codes. Item eleven, resolution number eighty-two forty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, approving an amended lease agreement between the Zelman Development Company and the City of Hawthorne for use of approximately eighty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two point seven square feet area located immediately south and west of the Hawthorne Municipal Airport, consenting to the assignment of the lease agreement and extending its term declaring the leased area exempt surplus land and finding that the mended lease is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Item thirteen, resolution number eighty-two fifty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, approving the execution of a loan agreement by and between the successor agency to the former Hawthorne redevelopment agency in the City of Hawthorne pursuant to the California Health and Safety Code Section three four one seven three for the payment of fiscal agent fees of the former redevelopment agency and taking certain related actions. Item fourteen, resolution number eighty-two fifty-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, approving the execution of a loan agreement by and between the successor agency to the former Hawthorne redevelopment agency in the City of Hawthorne pursuant to California Health and Safety Code Section three four one seven three for the payment of contractual tax rebates of the former redevelopment agency and taking certain related actions. Item fifteen, resolution number eighty-two fifty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, approving the execution of a loan agreement by and between the successor agency to the former Hawthorne redevelopment agency in the City of Hawthorne pursuant to California Health and Safety Code Section thirty-four one seventy-three for under-reported expenditures resulting in insufficient receipt of redevelopment property tax trust fund revenues and taking certain related actions. Item sixteen, resolution number eighty-two fifty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving Proposition sixty-eight to rehabilitate, create and improve local parks applications for per capita grant funds. Item seventeen, resolution number eighty-two fifty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing an application for the permanent local housing allocation program and adopting a three oh two C four plan for funding allocation years two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
To the Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull some items for further discussion. I'd like to pull item eleven. I'd like to pull item fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. And item number nineteen, public hearing for later.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, a vote can take place. Would I, my council colleagues like to give our councilmember an opportunity?
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. City Attorney, how do we go ahead and do that?
It's mute.
We can either go ahead and vote on the items that weren't pulled for discussion or we can just go ahead and have Councilmember Reyes English discuss the items that she's wanting to discuss.
Just go ahead and discuss them now, all councilmember, go ahead.
Okay, for item number, resolution number, item number eleven, resolution eighty-two forty-nine, the agreement with Zelman Development Company in the City of Hawthorne for approximately eighty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two point seven square feet area of surplus property. I did look at the agreement, I'm not in agreement with the actual monthly cost that they're trying to pay the City of Hawthorne. I do understand that, you know, Zelman, a potential broker, looking to broker a deal with the City of Hawthorne, ultimately turning around to lease this excess parcel at a higher cost. How did they come to the value of what the monthly amount would be, which is, you know, pennies, in my opinion? Eighty-four thousand square feet, I'd like to know what an acreage is that amount? Is that two, three, four acres? Eighty-four thousand sounds like a lot. More importantly, I, 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 I heard during all of our debates that the City of Hawthorne isn't for sale. So I say that to say that an appraisal should be made on our property to assure that we're getting the value, the right value, the monthly rents for that property. I think it's the best thing we could do as the gatekeepers to surplus property. We have had experiences in the past leasing property that is ours for hundred-year leases, fifty-year leases. Here, this lease wants to go for an additional five years plus three years increment of five years. That's roughly twenty years at their discretion. I think ultimately, we need to be the gatekeepers that we are and assure that we're doing our due diligence to assure that we're not getting lowballed and getting the right monies, monthly rent for excessive property ultimately that would benefit our coffers and would help us moving forward in a right direction. Being too quick to just say yes, again, is not gonna help us any. We're gonna be regretful as we've been regretful in other agreements and contracts from history. So I asked my colleagues to really take a look at this. Again, it's, it's item number eleven.
Okay. I can answer those questions. Okay, a condition precedent for a public entity to enter into a lease agreement, in fact, does require an appraisal. In this particular case, an appraisal was done and the appraisal came in at, I believe it was ninety-two hundred dollars per month. And the Zelman Corporation has agreed to actually pay us eighteen percent more than the appraised lease amount. So their annual lease payments, I think, currently are about ninety-two thousand four hundred. And now they're agreeing to pay us, you know, close to twenty percent more at a hundred and ten thousand per year in addition to a CPI increase every January.
I would have loved to have seen the appraisal attached to this, this item.
Okay. But staff did do its due diligence because no city can go ahead and lease any property or sell any property unless they have an appraisal in hand and that's, that's what was done.
Can we get the appraisal, can we get that to our council?
Sure.
Okay.
To the Chair, can somebody calculate, what's the rent per square foot that we're getting on that? What was it adjusted to?
Alex, you're the mathematician, can you divide eighty-four thousand into a hundred and ten thousand?
Eighty-four, that's like about?
Got multiplied about point nine something.
Eighty-four thousand divided by what?
Well, it's, they're paying us a hundred and ten thousand a year and it's about eighty-four thousand square feet.
So it's one point three, one point three one?
To the Chair. And this parcel is basically, it's, there is no structure there, right? It's an empty block per se?
Yes, it runs adjacent the length of the property that the Zelman Corporation bought from Triumph Aero Structures Vought and formerly owned by Northrup for their airplane manufacturing plant. And it's gonna be developed by the Zelman Corporation into something and which will come before the city council in the future. Right now, I believe a big percentage of the property is already leased to SpaceX. And SpaceX is interested in continuing to use this leased area because it's, it's basically being used for, for parking for the adjacent building that's owned by Zelman and also leased by SpaceX.
Yeah, because when I saw the item on the agenda, you know, I, I made some phone calls and find out how much it was a square footage for warehouse in Hawthorne, like commercial. So they gave me an average of two dollar per square footage. So and then I talked to Russell and I know the appraisal was done, so that is where I was okay with the item, so. Thank you.
Your next item that you wanna discuss?
Oh, yes, sorry about that, moving along. That was item eleven.
Yourself fourteen?
Yeah, item fourteen. That, I, I'm gonna, that has to do with the redevelopment agency, so I'm gonna, that's fine for me, that one's fine to go. I think fourteen and fifteen was just the development stuff that we just discussed, right?
Yes.
Redevelopment agency.
Yes.
Okay, the, the item number sixteen. I, I'm just curious because when I, before I came on board, it was my understanding that there aren't or are any construction, there was, there's no construction, no capital projects, no plans in the works. I'm just curious with regards to this item in particular, to rehab with COVID-19 and current orders given to closed parks and outside dining. Why are we moving forward on such a unsafe practice at this point to develop parks when families can't even enjoy them? And we're in this pandemic, so it, it goes to, what, why are we doing this at this time? And if we, and if we, and if we are doing it at this time, will we be using any city funds for matching funds and if so, how much is that?
To the Chair. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, I can answer those questions. So this is gonna allow us to apply for state grant funding under Prop sixty-eight. And if those funds are realized, we'll be looking to upgrade the playground equipment at Jim Thorpe Park and also install fitness equipment. At this point, there are no additional city funds program towards this concept. And we'd have to wait until we actually are awarded the funds and once, if we are, assuming we are awarded the funds, that would come back to the council for, for acceptance and further discussion about what we're going to do with them.
So I guess this resolution should read to the point that we're gonna be applying for state funds through Proposition sixty-eight?
Correct, so it's, it's a long resolution title and I believe that's required by the granting agency. But essentially, this authorizes us to apply for those funds.
Okay. Moving on to item number seventeen, with the, which is the permanent local housing allocation program for this fiscal year. I was reading along the lines of the eligibility activities for the first two years, including funding of the Veterans Housing Project, which is something I believe you all already voted on. I'm a little disappointed to see that the property alone didn't have sufficient parking for veterans and ADA compliance. It's my understanding there's only two or three parking spots, which is not enough, especially on Cordery, being so condensed and no parking on that street. I wish there would have been more leverage to assure that there was sufficient parking, moreover, for residents and guests. And more importantly, for those veterans who are ADA compliant or need handicap ramp access. But I also want to encourage, if in fact, that during the next three to five years, that the PLHS funds will be used to provide loans to developers and to, to develop additional housing, construct homeownership as well, which is something I've led efforts on, first time I won a homeownership program here in Hawthorne. I want to encourage for the developers to be quick to apply for any funding that brings Hawthorne good housing and for all types of income, income type housing. And I, I just want to assure that the City of Hawthorne still needs to meet its housing element. I know there's been some disagreements with regards to RENA numbers and what exactly that means for Hawthorne and what should be our mandated housing numbers. But as we all know as councilmembers and history in the City of Hawthorne, we have always been behind with regards to adequate housing for Hawthorne. And, and, and it's, it's a shame because we still have a great need and today, more than ever. I know our city is not a big city, but I think we need more and all types of housing is something that we should all look at. I know there's a lot of folks that want homeownerships, but to be true, today, there's not, there's not a whole lot of families that can afford that. So I don't know how long COVID is gonna be here, but keep in mind that people have lost their jobs and folks have lost their housing and there's a struggle happening. And I doubt that COVID is gonna be finished anytime soon, probably two to five years. But I do feel encouraged to let developers and those know that there is funding available for good housing here in Hawthorne, thank you. Moving right along again.
That was seventeen.
Yes, that was number seventeen for the housing, right. And then, then the last one, I'll just wait until there's public hearing on the item number eighteen.
To, to the Chair.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Eric, City Manager, can you address about that veterans housing that we did not approve? The plan, we asked the developer to go back and look to create more parking, can you address that, please?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor Protem. So that agreement was, the council authorized the city to enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement with the developer. As you recall, that was, we only received one proposal, it's a strong proposal, but we only received one. And so we are starting the process to get that agreement negotiated and that entire project will come back to the city council for consideration. And I do not dare bring any project back that does not have adequate parking.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem Montero for, for clarifying that because that, that was something that I heard and something that, you know, folks obviously was not comfortable with. So it's good to hear that we're looking to do more parking stalls at that location, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Item number nineteen?
Okay, item number nineteen, public hearing. Now is the time and place for a public hearing to consider an amendment to exclusive agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Red Flex Traffic Systems, Inc. for photo red light enforcement program. And Second Amendment to an exclusive agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the County of Los Angeles, California, and Red Flex Traffic Systems, Inc. for photo red light enforcement program and approval of corresponding blanket purchase order for this amendment in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Police Department's declaration publication filed, two brand communications were received and two individuals will be speaking tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, oral communications.
Okay, so, yeah, so Diana is gonna be calling them in right now.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yes, we can hear you, Diana.
Okay, Mister Listener. Can you hear me, Mister Listener? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker and you have three minutes. Okay. And you wanna go ahead? Hold on, hold on, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, try again.
Hi, this is Jim Listener. My email address is jim@deviromosa.com. I wanna talk about the, particularly about the red light camera at Rose Trans and Hendry. And trying to, okay, I've got my computer muted. The, last week, I sent you pictures showing that the cars waiting to turn left at Rose Trans and Hendry wait an unusual distance back from the limit line. And that's because the limit lines are far out in the middle of the intersection. I also made the video showing that those cars had over the, the center line of the road actually into the opposing traffic's lane when they make the left turn. And they do that to avoid the overly, overly tight right turn radius that would be required if they, the motor, were to, were to honor the odd position of the limit lines, what limit lines are presently. I described that as a no man's land and, and basically that the effect of, of having that place where nobody stops to wait for the signal and nobody wants to end up at if the signal goes red. I described that as a no man's land. And, and that it makes, makes the yellow, which is already the federal minimum as short as possible, makes it even shorter. I also wrote about some physical challenges of navigating the turn, the tightness of it, the narrowness of the lanes, the weird position of the limit lines. And so what I thought I'd like to add to is ask staff to tell you the average age of the people getting tickets at that left turn versus the average age of the people getting tickets at the other red light cameras in town. And ask staff, I assume that the public works people are there at the meeting, ask staff, tell them, tell you why those limit lines have to be out in the middle of the intersection? It's such an odd setup. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Next, please.
Thank you.
Mister, next person, please?
Yes, so, yeah, Diana is getting the next person, who is Mr. Jay Bieber.
Hi, we're still trying to get ahold of him, one moment.
Diana, if he's not responding, we will email him and ask him to write us an email that we can forward to the council.
Wait, hi, he's on the line, hold on.
Perfect.
Okay, hi, Mr. Bieber?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Jay Bieber, I'm the Executive Director of Safer Streets LA. I wanna congratulate the new councilmembers. I wanted to chat with you for just a few moments here about the red light camera at the program.
Diana, we can't hear him anymore.
Let's get him back online.
And I also wanted to concentrate on some of the signal timing, which is my area of expertise. So first of all, our data, which I had sent to you, shows that there has been no reduction in red light related collisions over the sixteen-year period of camera usage at any of the red light camera locations. In addition, the intersections chosen for automated enforcement did not appear to have a red light running collision problem and likely should not have been outfitted with ticketing hammers. During this time, the city has issued approximately forty-five million dollars worth of tickets, eighty-seven percent of which are issued for turning maneuvers, not the more dangerous straight through violations that the program was likely meant to address. And what's important about that is there have been no collisions at any red light camera enforced intersection for at least the past two decades due to someone running a red light while making even Due to someone running a red light while making either a right or a left turn. That the vast majority of your tickets are issued for those maneuvers. Um, but the most important thing is that forty-two percent of the four hundred and ninety dollars tickets issued by the city are associated with the dedicated left turn lanes. At westbound Rosecrans and Hendry. Now, the yellow arrow signal timing at this location is set at the absolute minimum of three seconds. Which is too short for the safe and legal movement of vehicles in these lanes. I'm not saying it is not at the legal limit. I'm simply saying. That the protocols have changed. I was actually instrumental in getting the national standards changed through the Institute for Transportation Engineers. Um, for turning lanes. There is a new formula and that formula takes into account uh, the length of the lanes and a number of other factors. Those are two very long lanes. The three seconds is way too short for that sort of situation. That three seconds is meant for a very short turning lane. Um, and the, um, and these standards will eventually be memorialized into the MUTCD. For the state of California, but because of the pandemic, that hasn't happened yet. Um, so to address this issue, we're asking the city staff. Uh, regardless of whether the program continues or not, uh, to submit a city service request to LA County Public Works, who is responsible for maintaining those cameras. And request that they review the signal timing for the left turn lanes at Rosecrans and Hendry and update it according to their county standards, which is what they use at the other. Um, red light camera locations, um, at, in the city, which are on, I believe, county, uh, most, most of them are on county highways. So, um, the staff there is awaiting this request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mister Bieber.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else?
No, there aren't any more speakers.
Speakers, but I have, uh.
Let me just double check something. I'll open it up. Okay, so immediately following this, now we're gonna have Lieutenant Sneakoket giving our report.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I really appreciate it and I hope to. Clarify a few issues and uh, edify the topic at hand.
It says, the, it says Christopher Comathy.
It does, we're.
Playing games with us, or what?
We're sharing an office and uh, his office looks better than mine, truth be told.
Alright, go ahead, sir.
Uh, so I would obviously like to uh, talk about the City of Hawthorne's red light camera program tonight. And I believe there should be a slideshow up, um, that should be coming up, or PowerPoint. Thank you, Eric. Um, so that's just the, the first slide. It's just a graphic. It's to show Rosecrans Avenue and Hendry Avenue where uh, obviously one of these systems is in place. Uh, but continuing forward, if we can go to slide two there, please, Eric. Um, our red light camera program has been in existence in Hawthorne since March of two thousand and four. It originally started at Hawthorne and El Segundo, um. And uh, and at Rosecrans and Hendry avenues. Um, in July of two thousand and four, the program. Extended to additional intersections, which is Imperial Highway and Freeman Avenue and at Hawthorne Boulevard and Imperial Highway. Um, the red light program here in Hawthorne addresses a specific issue of. People running red lights, which is obviously dangerous and causes injuries and, and some occasions death. But the system monitors those intersections that we have in place twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, the program and what we have found is statistically, I'm sorry, statistically shown to improve the safety of drivers. Passengers and pedestrians on the roadway. Uh, we can forward to the next slide, please. So I just wanna cover a few things about um, some myths or common misnomers out there that I think some of the public. Has been led to believe or misinformed, or just simply not aware of. Um, so red light cameras, they think that this is illegal or an overreach. Um, it is not. Um, this has been uh, state law that allows this, um, for the use of photo enforcement. On these systems and that's covered under Vehicle Code Section two-one-four-five-five-point-five. And Vehicle Code Section four-zero-five-one-eight. And we can go on to the next slide there, please. Um, people think that the vendor, uh, in this case, which would be Red Flex, issues the citations. Um, and that is not true. Uh, before any citations are issued. Uh, authorized police department staff or personnel, they review the photographic and video evidence to make sure that there was a violation that was, that had occurred. That the driver can be identified and all those citations are issued by trained people in the traffic bureau who are authorized to utilize a red light camera system. And we can forward to the next slide, please. And then, uh, in regards to fines, uh, which is a myth. Um, that they think that they're more expensive than regular traffic violations if, for example, a motor or a traffic officer had pulled you over and issued you the same citation. There's no discrepancy in those fines or fees. Um, it is all the same amount. Um. Those fines are not determined by anyone here. They're determined by the state legislator, uh, or legislature, excuse me. And those fines are the same, they're universal, um, and they're set statewide. And if we can forward on to side six, please. And this is a thing that we're very well aware of, and I think it was almost touched upon by Mister Bieber. Um, about these yellow phases maybe being purposely set lower. Um, that is not true. And in fact, um, our lights are timed, um, in, in accordance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Which is, all those standards are set by Caltrans and they're also, um, same standards that are used by the LA County Signal Maintenance. Uh, folks on those and those lights. We have to perform tests on those to make sure that those are the correct times and that they do meet that standard. Um, and just to address some of the other concerns about an updated standard, the, the. Yellow timing right now is set to the standard that is in place. And obviously, if that standard were to be changed, then our yellow timing, uh, standard would change with that to be in accordance with that. Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So we can forward on to slide seven, please. Um, a lot of people think that they can just ignore these tickets. Um, that is not true. The Los Angeles County Superior Court actively pursues these cases, um, and people who ignore them. But they are not done in the same process as perhaps a regular traffic citation that someone actually signed a notice to appear. This manner here is all done through a civil process, um, through the court. And we can go on to number eight, please, Eric. And then a lot of people just simply say that they think they're unfair. Um, but we say that, uh, or we s- suggest that. Citation issued utilizing the photo enforcement system provides the violator with actual photographs of, of the violation. And an opportunity to review the evidence, I'm sorry, a video prior to any court proceedings. Um, all red light violators are entitled to the same due process as any other violator and can have their case heard by our Superior Court Judge. And we have people attending court weekly on these cases and are challenged. Uh, weekly in court and we're successful in prosecuting these based on the evidence we have and laws set forth in the state legislature. We can go on to number nine, please. Uh, another myth is that these things do not, or I'm sorry, the red light cameras do not impact safety at all. Um, and our statistics that we keep here within just the City of Hawthorne, I will at least address here what concerns us locally. Is that from January first, two thousand and seventeen to today, there have been a total of fifty-four traffic at collisions at those locations. That are equipped with red light cameras. Twenty-eight persons reported. Um, an injury or a complaint of pain as a result of those collisions. Four of those collisions were directly caused by traffic vi- uh, violations. This is significantly lower than similar sized intersections that are not or were not equipped with any red light cameras. Um, so during that same period, the intersections without any traffic enforcement cameras had a total of one hundred and twenty-one traffic collisions. With a number of eighty-three persons reported an injury or had a complaint of pain. And unfortunately, sadly, three persons were killed at intersections that did not have these. Um, and forty-six of these total collisions were directly related to traffic vi- violations. So I would think that, uh, the difference is obviously, in my opinion, strikingly vast and it's evident. And we have three fatalities at intersections that are not equipped with the red light cameras. And if we can go to the next slide, please. Um, and there is another common myth, myth out there about the red light cameras, uh, lead to an increased rear end collision. Um, and in the same period of January first, twenty seventeen to today, um, there's not been an increase in rear end collisions that our data supports. Um, at any different variance or level at intersections with these systems in place versus those without. Um, in fact, our data where the red light cameras are located indicate that these types of collisions are actually reduced. Um, the reported collisions are a result of unsafe speed or falling too close, which are two factors that would lead to a rear end collision, was twenty-three collisions. Um, this was fewer than the intersections, uh, that we compared to that were not equipped with. And their numbers there for rear end type collisions were thirty. So there is a difference, um, in that regard. And if we can go to the next slide, please. And another myth out there or misnomer is that they think the amount of citations. Uh, is being paid to the vendor is based on the number of citations issued. Um, that is not true. Um, the vendor, in this case, Red Flex, um, is paid a contractually negotiated fee that is set and does not change. Based on the number of citations issued. So I know some people have this thing that they think it's a quota base. It's not. Um, the fee is the same regardless of the number of citations issued. Um, and in California Vehicle Code twenty-one-four-fifty-five-point-five subsection H one. Says, "A contract between a government aid, a governmental agency and a manufacturer or supplier of automated traffic enforcement equipment shall not." Include provision for the payment or compensation to the manufacturer or supplier based on the number of citations generated. Or as percentage of the revenue generated as a result of the use of the equipment authorized under this section. So it's cleared out, it's codified, uh, the rules are, are plain, uh, and, and obviously the myth about that is. Dispelled that it's codified in law. Um, and then we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so we would get to the point where, uh, we're obviously recommending certain things. But we, we do wanna reiterate that all citations issued to people are issued by the Hawthorne Police Department and not a. Civilian or separate company or in this case, Red Flex. Uh, we strictly adhere to the California Department of Transportation, commonly known as Caltrans. That manual on uniform traffic control devices and as stated, if those standards change, we would change. Um, data has shown that red light cameras have reduced rear end collisions here in Hawthorne. Um, injury traffic collisions and more importantly, fatal traffic collisions. Uh, we have not had fatal colla- uh, traffic collisions at the intersections that are equipped with red light cameras, which. Uh, the intersections are large and obviously have a high volume of traffic and I think that's a pretty remarkable number. Um, this effective technology supplements traditional law enforcement methods, um, such as motors or traffic officers enforcing obviously roles in your usual. Traffic stop scenarios. Um, and they combat traffic safety concerns throughout the city. Uh, technology allows for constant monitoring of an area without concern. Of an officer getting fatigued and or further exasperating traffic congestion with a conventional traffic stop, which I can attest to doing. I'm not sure the number of traffic stops I've done, but we do sometimes create an impediment, uh, or include traffic when we are out there doing traffic stops. Cuz we really have limited areas where we can do them and we make traffic worse sometimes by doing enforcement. These methods here don't infringe upon that and it keeps traffic moving. Um, but the city's red light camera enforcement program, and, and my opinion, is, uh, it's proven vital to be, uh, improvement in public safety. And I know that we would recommend continuing the red light program in the best interest of public safety. And for the residents and the, you know, visitors of the City of Hawthorne. And I certainly appreciate your time and I'm available if I can answer questions or some other staff that may be present here as well.
Through, through the chair, yes. Thank you, um, so much for that, for that report. Um. So I wanted to ask a question about the. Um, the, the, the accuracy in terms of enforceability. So when, when, when tickets are given at those intersections. Um, can you give us a percentage of the ones who are upheld if, if, if the, uh, if the person challenges the, um. The ticket and says that it wasn't me or, uh, or, um, you know, you had, you know, had, you, you enforced the, the, the. You did not enforce it properly or something like that. Are we generally, are, are the tickets generally upheld by the courts?
Um, we have had a very high success rate in court with these violations because we screen every violation. And only administer a violation when we believe that the violation has been committed. It's captured via evidence, in this case, there are photographs, but the video, uh, really tells the story. And once we can make a positive identification of the driver, short of those factors being present, we do not process the citation. And move forward, so therefore we really don't go to court except on violations that we feel one hundred percent positive. A violation has been committed and a judicial officer also confirms the IDs of these or the identifications of the drivers. Uh, before a process, a violation is ever processed. So is it that, hopefully that helps clarify the question, but as far as us going to court and actually winning cases for lack of a better matter. Um, we are very successful at that. We take that serious and we, and we litigate every case or adjudicate every case that we, we possibly can.
Thank you.
To, to the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Officer Kuket, uh, real quick, um, I'm looking at some, some statistics. Um, page two of three, uh, it gives a chart and it talks about the calendar year incidents reviewed. Uh, notices printed and actual citations issued. Um, and then down further from there, it says it talks about basically actual numbers of citations. That were issued between two thousand and five and twenty eighteen. And then it gives a total number of potential violations. Uh, actually decreased by twenty-two point four percent. So, um. I just want to, to understand, in the years of, we've had this red camera, what, fourteen, fifteen years roughly?
Since two thousand and four, yes.
So it's, it's helping, uh, not only capture those vi- viol- violators. Red, red, running red cam- re- running red light, but, um, it sa- it sounds like it's also critiquing. Uh, it from happening over and over again because it looks like you've have in this report roughly between one or two. Citations for red camera, maybe going to any one given, given person. So. Even though, though it decreases, it, you believe that it will continue to decrease? Or is it just helping change the habit of those running red lights?
Um, obviously, my, my opinion on it decreasing, I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I have my own feelings of why. Especially from being a traffic enforcement officer, that when we go out and specifically sit at a stop sign for, for an example. Um, our presence alone immediately changes people's behavior. Uh, we immediately will see a decrease in people running a stop sign because of our presence. So therefore analogous to this would be at the red light intersections where these. Systems are in place and people know that. Um, it sort of serves as the same purpose of us sitting there visibly being. Seen by the public and monitoring it such as the same would be on a stop sign or monitoring a different red light in the city. So I think the, the signage and the, and the knowledge that it's there, I believe it absolutely alters behavior. Because I see altered behavior the minute people see us as a motor officer or a traffic officer or just as a police officer next to them. Um, if that helps clarify the issue.
Thank you for that. I also want to address some of the, the public comments that were made and it sounds like Hendry and Rosecrans is a, is a hot. Topic. Um, Hendry, Rosecrans, Rosecrans and Hendry and, you know, the question remains on, you know. Striping and why certain, uh, striping is further out, et cetera, et cetera. Do you, do you think this has any bearing to folks running a red light ultimately?
Uh, I, I don't believe so because the intersections here, they're all basically, they have to be approved or certified and certainly looked at by the city engineers. I don't have those specific numbers of what they should be, but I, I mean, I'm sure as all of us here listening or monitoring the, the meeting, we've all been through that intersection. I believe it's in accordance with everything that's out there, we're all within a, an intersection that's not meant to be. Um, deceptive or luring people into running a red light because that inherently would be wrong, not to mention grossly unsafe and dangerous. So I believe the limit lines are placed where they, where they should be appropriately and I don't find anything in my experience. Of that that intersection has anything that is deceptive or improper or malaligned or something like that, but. I am also not the person charged with developing the engineering or the measurements of that intersection.
I, I've often seen, um, folks approaching, uh, Rosecrans on Hendry. Uh, headed north on Hendry to Rosecrans and immediately grab, uh, a right turn going, um. East and that light will flash. And some of the reasons that I've seen from, from that happening, they're not making a full stop.
Uh, correct. So when you have people that are approaching a cert- solid circular red light. Um, all red lights, I think we can agree upon means stop. And that means come to a complete stop prior to the very first limit line at an intersection. So when people are making a right turn, you have the intersection there depending on the phase of the light. But for people that are traveling east, I'm sorry, west on Rosecrans are going to turn. South onto Hendry. They have the ability to make a U-turn there. So it's important that people actually stop completely. For the U-turn factor when that light is green or phase green for people to make the U-turn. Plus you do have pedestrians that walk off the curbs a- all the time. There's a gas station there, there's a hotel there, there's eateries right across the street. I think we could all agree upon that that's a fairly busy intersection. And you have cars entering the highway from the gas station there and if people that are running the red light. It's uh, it's very and and in my opinion, dangerous and it causes accidents.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead, uh.
Have a number of questions. Um, this program is this for multiple intersections, not just for one, is that correct?
Correct. We have uh, many different approaches in the city. With the total of. We have seven different approaches, but it's at four different intersections within the city.
And you had made a comparison about uh, collisions as a result of traffic traffic violations. Uh, with. I guess intersections where there wasn't a red light camera compared to those where there were where they were. Uh, do you have like a number per approach? Like the amount of colli- collision per per approach. Uh, comparison, because if we're talking about seven approaches, are you comparing seven approaches? With red light cameras versus more than seven. That don't have red light cameras.
So what we did is not compare a specific approach, but we use comparisons for intersections that are comparable to size.
Did you compare the same amount?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
You compare the same amount, like you had listed there was four. Collisions. Uh, as a result of um, violating the the red light camera. And the places where there were red light cameras compared to a hundred and. Some uh, are are I don't know forty something collisions. Uh, where there wasn't red light cameras. Were are we comparing the same amount of approaches? You know, seven to seven and comparing more that's more or less.
Um, all of the intersections that were used are the ones that we obviously have the red light camera system in place. And then the comparable intersections are the are similar in scope and size and. To a degree, the same number of approaches. If that makes sense. So for example, um, if using Ri- Rosecrans and 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 Hendry. I'm sorry Hawthorne and El Segundo as an example of one of the intersections, because that's one of the approaches that we have covered with the system. The uh, the comparable intersection to that would be Crenshaw and El Segundo. Um, where there is no red light camera in in place.
Gotcha. So it was it was one to one comparison wasn't like. Seven approaches with red light cameras compared to fifteen approaches that don't have red light cameras.
Uh, and the data that we have is all, it doesn't specify that this exactly happened. Let's say, for example, you have two left turn lanes. It it won't say. It occurred in this lane. It'll only give and what's called an AOI, which is an area of impact and it only goes by. The data of what caused the collision, the area of impact, which is precisely or roughly where the vehicles collided. But it doesn't specify in the data breakdown to like a approach. Um, of like saying if it's this lane at an intersection, what is a T- a traffic collision on another intersection? It's basically. All included into the intersection. Data as an entire intersection, not broken down in approaches.
So we don't have a amount of collisions per approach number to compare.
Uh, I I can only compare the number of collisions, total collisions inters- intersection and what the causal factors were.
Gotcha.
I can't break it down, this left turn lane compared to this left turn lane at this intersection. It's not that specific.
Gotcha. Um, the total investment is twenty-four thousand. That's from the general fund? Or is that paid for by any grants or?
Uh, I I don't, I'm not exactly entirely sure where that comes from. I'm under the impression it does come from the general fund, sir.
If uh, Councilmember Patterson, if I may interject. So the way we have funded the uh, red light enforcement program. Since its inception has been uh, via a revenue account. That where all traffic fines uh, for citations written by our police officers in person. In combination with the red light camera program are deposited after uh, individuals receiving a citation. Have dispositioned via traffic court and paid their fines.
I'm sorry, who's talking? I can't see, I can't see. So I don't know who who I I just hear a voice.
Okay, let's not interrupt them. Let's leave them speaking. Be addressed to the chair. Go ahead.
So essentially, uh, all the fines are going to account is paid for out of that account.
That is correct, sir.
Uh, and then what about the money that's left over?
Um, I would actually defer to uh, finance or to the city manager on that. My assumption would be those are general funds monies.
The chair.
Yes, sir.
To answer that question, Captain Tomatani is correct. Uh, that that citation revenue was received by the general fund. Our expenses associated with the contract are paid by the general fund. And the remainder um, is part of the many sources of revenue we have for the general fund on an annual basis.
Uh, it was mentioned um, about. How this is a civil matter matter if uh, may receive that that red light ticket. I'm just curious. If somebody received a red light ticket, does it affect their driving record?
Uh, yes, it does. It carries the same weight as any other violation. As far as one one point on your record for a moving violation. So when I said that it's it's if you've ignored it. Because you did not physically sign a notice to appear from an officer in the field. The matter to collect. Uh, is pursued through a collections agency that's all conducted through LA Superior Court.
Got it. And and does that, but these fines aren't added to your car registration or affected with your DMV experience?
Uh, it's pursued through the uh, Superior Court system via collections agency as far as I know that, sir.
Got it. And I have a another question. Why is the intersection on Hendry and Rosecrans? I just talked about so much. I've got a lot of communication from the public about that particular intersection.
It's a very high volume intersection. It's a feeder for the four oh five freeway from northbound and southbound from. Uh, it's it's an extremely uh, busy intersection with a very high volume of traffic.
Do we issue a lot of tickets in that particular intersection?
There are quite a few. I don't have the numbers in front of me to show you exactly how many tickets there. I'm sure I can find that number if you request that. But i- it does, it does uh, issue um, quite a few violations there, sir.
I'm curious know. As a percentage of. All the. All the uh, cameras, how many come from there? What what are the approaches where the red light camera is? Uh, located on Hendry and Rosecrans. I apologize. I don't I don't know where.
At Hendry and Rosecrans. Let me uh, find out here real quick. I know you have. Westbound Rosecrans to southbound Hendry.
Westbound. Rose, okay.
And then you have northbound Rosecrans, I'm sorry, northbound Hendry. Uh, excuse me, to eastbound Rosecrans. The right turn on red there.
Excuse me, uh, this is. Gary Tomatani again from the police department, just for clarification on that. So at Rosecrans and Hendry, um, if you're traveling. Westbound on Rosecrans to southbound Hendry, both left turn lanes are covered by our program. If you are traveling northbound on Hendry towards Rosecrans. Both right turn lanes are covered.
Let me repeat that. Some north on Hendry, both right turns are covered. And what was the the previous one?
If you're traveling uh, westbound on Rosecrans towards Hendry. Southbound left turn lanes are covered.
Got you. Those are my question.
Yes.
Yes, um, Councilmember Reyes.
I have a, I have a concern with regards to the two hundred and forty thousand coming from, you said, the general fund. I'm just curious, why wouldn't it come from forfeiture money or from the police uh, general fund, especially this. With the vehicle code violations and. Things that are under the purview of uh, police.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
So um, the 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 revenues that we receive for um, any type of. Moving citation issued by the police department are um, deposited in the general fund. And the expenses associated with this program, um, I'm sorry, this program contributes to some of that revenue. Expenses associated with that program are also paid from that revenue, um, all in the general fund. Uh, of which the police department obviously is is one of our uh, largest departments that consumes general fund resources. As it relates to using other funds like asset forfeiture or grant funds. Those typically are not allowable under fe- federal or state regulations.
To the chair, I have one more. The the cost of this program. How many police officers would this pay for? One? One and a half?
There, so. There really is no direct translation to how many police officers this pays for. I can give you an estimation on. It would take approximately five to seven full-time police officers. Working one of these intersections to, in a reasonable workday. Produce the same number of citations that each one of these cameras does.
Same number of in. Enforced cited citations?
Enforcement citations, that's correct. So the hard, the hardest translation here, as this is not an exact science. Is that um, our police officers that are assigned to the traffic bureau or to the patrol bureau. Are all tasked with additional duties. They respond to traffic collisions throughout the city. They're required to write reports for those traffic collisions. They are involved in DUI investigations. So the advantage that an automated system has over. A breathing police officer is simply that the automated system is one hundred percent dedicated twenty-four hours a day. Seven days a week specifically to addressing the issue of people who fail to stop at a red light.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Office Kuket and Office Tematani for coming. Especially to spell out all the the myths about the red camera lights. Citation that a lot of people think they don't, they don't have to pay it. So thank you for clarifying that. The thing that I want to say is is a comment because we know. A lot of people speed up in our other street that does not have red cameras, especially on one twenty, you know, uh, one thirty fifth. So people is, and when we go out to the community, to the neighborhood association meetings. The number one complaint is people speeding up in our street. So uh, for me, uh, these red camera is there to educate people to slow down. And to make sure that they stop when when the lights come yellow, so they don't go through that the intercession, so for them not to cause. Accident and injury. So I am, uh, I'm I'm going to vote in favor of these re- uh, red light cameras because. It's for purpose of education and safe lives. So we are here to protect and be safe to our people. And we have a lot of other concern that people are speeding up all in other streets. That does not have uh, red light cameras. So thank you for the for the presentation and um, if I don't see you guys, happy holiday.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to you as well. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the floor.
I move that the uh, red light camera program be approved and uh, and the vendor uh, be accepted.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reyes English. Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Abstaining.
Councilmember Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, except for city council member Patterson abstaining.
Thank you all very much. Happy holidays to you. I really appreciate the the time. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you so much. Next, we have general matters. Item number twenty-two. Interim Assistant Director of Planning Art Bashmakian has an oral report on this item.
Thank you, Eric. You're gonna start? Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Art Bashmakian, interim Assistant Planning Director. This is a informational item on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA. As mandated by state housing law for the periodic process of updating local housing elements of the general plan. Next. Just a word about the housing element. It's a state mandated policy document requiring local jurisdictions to address housing needs. Adopt housing goals and establish programs to facilitate housing development. It's part of the city's general plan. And it's required to be updated every eight years. The city council will review and ultimately adopt uh, the housing element at a duly noticed public hearing. Later uh, next year. Review and certification is required by the California Department of Housing and Community Development Department. Next. Next. So what is Regional Housing Needs Assessment? It's allocated to each city. It's determined by. Housing Community Development Department uh, through the assistance of each region's council of governments. In our case. It's the Southern California Association of Governments. And this is imposed on all cities, including City of Hawthorne, by the State of California. Next. So. This is now we're in the sixth housing element cycle to cover the period of two twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine. After extensive public input and review. HCD. And SCAG Regional Council adopted the final RENA methodology. This means that the entire six county SCAG region is required to plan. For one point three million housing units over the next eight year period. Next. I'm not going to go into the methodology is very complex, but basically. It's determined based on projected housing needs of the jurisdiction, the existing housing needs. Combining the two, these are based on various factors, including job accessibility and transit accessibility. Then that number is uh, determined into different categories, linkum ca- categories, very low, moderate and above moderate. Should mention that the RENA numbers in most cities and coastal counties were doubled or tripled this time. Next. And this slide. Indicates what uh, the allocation is for the city of Hawthorne. The total number of units, one thousand seven hundred thirty-one. And it's broken down into those categories I mentioned, very low income, four hundred forty yards, low income, two hundred and four. Moderate income, two hundred forty-nine and above moderate, eight hundred thirty-four. Next.
Please stay on that page. Can you stay, go back, keep stay on that page. Where's the handout? Why didn't we receive a handout? With this presentation.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So uh, I I think that the summary data was provided in the agenda bill. Certainly make this presentation available to the council and any member of the committee that's interested.
Yeah, I believe it's important because this is uh, ultra critical. To have this specific presentation the way it's uh, listed here. So just don't move that then. Keep that. I want to cut these numbers down.
Uh, do we?
Just just hold on real quick.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead while I'm writing these. Go ahead.
Just to bring it to your attention, it is in our binder. It's agenda item number twenty-two and it's in our book. It gives all of the uh, income category and neighborhood, uh, neighboring cities. So just trying to.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Just trying to save you from having to fight all that out.
But the present, thank you. This presentation, the way it's uh, this uh, shown here, it's very good. Nice and colorful and uh. The uh. The graphs are pretty good. So go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So this uh, shows. Our adjacent neighboring cities, just to show in comparison what their allocations are. So it's interesting to see. Gardena, Inglewood. Substantially more than what Hawthorne's been allocated. Again, just as a comparison. Next. So the, this number, the allocation is a critical, is a key component in the housing element process. So with this number, the city needs to. Provide goals and policies and quantified objectives and implementation programs to meet. Provide goals and policies and quantified objectives and implementation programs to meet the housing needs of Hawthorne. Uh, city must identify sufficient potentially develop a land to meet the Rena allocation. Evaluation of reallocation and its implications. We're going to get feedback from the community through the process of the housing eleven update. And ultimately come before the city council, um, uh, for consideration to get, um, to provide options. This probably would occur sometime in early, uh, summer of twenty twenty-one. Next steps. So the city was informed about its allocation in September. There was an opportunity to appeal, which ended on October twenty-sixth. Uh, the basis for appeal is very limited. Uh, only a handful of cities have appealed. The city did not file an appeal because. The assessment was favorable to us in the first place and they're really, we didn't have a strong basis to file an appeal. Five cities out of the sixteen South Bay cities filed appeals. After the process of, uh, the appeal process, final allocations will be issued in February of twenty twenty-one. And the housing element update is due to, um, HCD by October twenty twenty-one. So staff recommends that the city council receive and file this informational item. Thank you.
Uh, do I have any questions for my council colleagues?
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, um. Art, I, I spoke a little bit about earlier. Uh, the importance of assuring that we had adequate housing at all levels, uh, from work, live to, um. Very low to moderate and, uh, above moderate. So all of this are, are, are exactly what we need to see and work harder for. And I think it's even. That much more harder, uh, considering the pandemic and everything else that we're under. For very low, extremely low, um, forty, four, four hundred and forty-four seems. I don't know. Maybe right, um, but, um. I'd like to, I'd like to just bring to the attention of, um, you know, the home ownership, uh, that I spoke on earlier. Look at the median household income is only sixty-eight thousand. And some of that, you know, might, might be a little bit more, a little bit less, but, um. I think, I think the numbers are, are good, uh, in our favor. I, I agree with you. Um, I'm looking at Inglewood, uh, needs seven thousand, um, four hundred and twenty-two, and how do you get that with the SoFi Stadium? And, uh, the number of, uh, their, their housing, um, only going up. So, um, thank you for the information. I, I, I sure hope that, um. That we could somehow, uh, champion the, the need for additional housing here in Hawthorne and find ways of, uh. Bringing more projects to assure that. Okay, thank you.
Art.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions to Art first and then I'll let you on. So, uh, the city of Hawthorne has always had a hard, a problem with, uh, housing and the high density in the city. Uh, vast majority of the community is very disappointed that the city keeps on approving high-density projects. Apartments, uh, that are, that are supposed to be condos. There's Bates and Switch. Bates and switches that take place. And the community feels that there's a po- problem with parking. If I ask anybody, they'll, a vast majority is going to agree with me. Building high-density housing has been a scourge on the city. And, uh, it's a repeated theme that has appeared over and over. And, uh. Why, why are you making the assumption that this is favorable? Why did you make the decision to not? Proceed with, uh, contesting this, Art?
First of all, I, um, I didn't make a decision on my own. Uh, that's the first, uh, first comment. Uh, this is something that is decided by some city manager or council members may direct, the council may direct us. But, um, it wasn't, uh, uh, my independent decision now to, uh, to file an appeal. So just wanted to make that clear. But in terms of, uh, favorable, it just in comparison with the other cities, that's the comment I made in comparison.
Favorable, I mean, you have like El Segundo, El Segundo who is close to our square mileage. Only having, uh, what, what is it? Four hundred and ninety-one units. These, these cities don't have the high population density that we have. We have ninety thousand people. Within our, uh, six and a half square miles. That's about sixteen to seventeen thousand people within one square mile. So what, again, I'm gonna ask you, how is? How did you, maybe we do need to see what the, uh, mechanism that SCAG used to be able to allot this to us. I mean, I don't think we, you know, that's beyond us to be able to understand. Anybody here on this council, any, any single person. Uh, I think this, uh. Our high population density, the fact that we are overrun with the high-density apartments. Is, uh, problematic. And we're expecting your office, uh, and many of the residents are expecting that your office. Puts a stop to these allotments. You know? What we need is more commercial development. High den- high-density housing and housing is in excess here in the city. So. Anybody that wants to say that we need more. Uh, we are doing our part by ha- all the high-density apartments that we have already that have been approved. And we actually have developers that are waiting on the, uh, on the sidelines. Hoping that this council or any council in the future increases the popu- increases the density of their projects. Manyfold so that they can profit. It's not about offering, uh. Good housing and affordable housing to people. They say they're gonna give you low to moderate income housing, and then guess what? They give market rate, uh, rents. Three thousand dollars per month rents. And we've seen that over there like on Rosecrans. Low to moderate income housing, what does that sound? Is that, is that three thousand dollars per month? So, Art. I think, uh. You need to have more communication with the council. Um, that's your role. I don't think you can make assumptions. Um, I think you, maybe this is a communication and this is the point at which we do tell you. Uh, what we feel as a group or as individuals here. But, uh. We need to, yeah, sure, we can see these numbers here. Oh, wow. You know? Compared to these cities, et cetera, but look at the sizes of these cities. I think the beach city needs to do a bit more than us. And there's other cities like, uh, on the hill. On Palos Verdes and all those little fancy cities that are up there that need to do their part. They have the room, they have the space, and they should be doing something like that. Go ahead.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Greg, talk to me.
Uh, yeah, so, you know, as far as making the assessment, uh, favorable. The council at the time, uh, during the appeal process. The direction was that, uh, we didn't want any additional housing that we didn't need to accommodate. And so when, when we say favorable, uh, what we're saying is that our numbers in comparison to cities like Gardena of similar populations. Our numbers are a lot lower, um, than what theirs were. And if you look at their appeal letters. Uh, that they wrote, they were, their, their justification is that. Their number should be lowered and distributed to neighboring cities such as us. Um, and so trying to make the argument that our low number isn't lower. Or low enough, I think would have worked against us, um, with the other cities saying that they should be. We should be taking on, uh, a lot more of that, uh, allocation.
So please remind us what our numbers were last, the last iteration.
I believe they were around seven hundred, Art?
Yes, uh, somewhere between, uh, upper six hundred to around seven hundred.
Right, and so almost all the cities in the South Bay, um, double, triple their numbers.
Did we fulfill any of those housing, uh, the actual building of those Rena numbers, those seven hundred?
I do know we fulfilled some. I do not have that number off the top of my head that I can provide that to you.
And at what point are we going to reassess our, our, um, R four, R three layout?
Um, during the housing element update, those, that's when we'll go through an inventory analysis and determine where, uh, we could accommodate these Rena numbers.
Okay, um, I, I said my piece. Go ahead, anybody else, please?
It was Ms. Valentine.
Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Thank you. So at the time, um, the Rena numbers were being considered. Um, we at the South Bay cog had a lot of discussions about it. And many cities felt that it was very arbitrary, the way Rena assigned the number. For example, uh, El Segundo's allocation. Um, what was the, the rational basis for giving El Segundo such a low number? When there, they are, they are a city that has many more opportunities for jobs than the city of Hawthorne. Why would, why did they not allocate, um, housing where the jobs are? It, it looked as if they were just picking numbers out of the air in order to make decisions and many cities felt that way. We, we, we did not appeal, but many cities did appeal. And my understanding is that there hasn't been a final decision yet because the, um. The legal department of SCAG decided not to appeal to the Department of Finance. Not to depeal, appeal the allocation. And cities wrote back and asked them to reconsider that decision not to appeal. And my understanding that re- that reconsideration is still being, um, being, uh, being considered. So my understanding, there hasn't been a final, final decision by SCAG not to appeal the numbers. That is my understanding. I wonder maybe, uh, the city manager or someone can clarify what the status is at this point.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, so there are a number of cities who appealed. Uh, I think Art's presentation identified out of the sixteen. Uh, South Bay cog cities, uh, five, five did appeal. Um, so I guess you're looking at about thirty percent, thirty-five percent of our cities appealed. Uh, if you look at SCAG as a region, I believe there's a hundred and ninety-one cities, uh, in the SCAG. And out of SCAG, there were fifty cities appealed, so about twenty-five percent of the cities appealed. Um, as far as El Segundo. Um, and their number, it's, it's a really complicated process and I know Art, we. Kind of gave a real high-profile view, but we do have a consultant here, Hito Mosesman. Um, uh, that could, might be able to shed some light on why El Segundo's number, uh, was lower. And I, I, I want to say it's probably because of their, their, uh, industrial, large industrial area. But maybe Hita can shed some light on that for you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so to, to, to address the questions that have come up. Um, the SCAG methodology that was adopted, as Art and Greg have, have mentioned, is very complex. And there are a number of different factors that, that are looked at. So there's the existing need, there's the future need, and the future needs really based on. Um, access to transportation of regular frequency, um, and job growth. Those are really two of the largest, um, factors. There are also some, uh, population projections that come out of the state of. California. So basically SCAG received this allocation of one point three million units. And needed to disperse them throughout the hundred and ninety-one cities and came up with this methodology based on this information. They asked each city for popu- or for, um, the projected and existing need numbers in terms of housing. So cities were able to provide that. And they also asked for employment projections from each city. And to get to the point of the, the, the transportation of regular frequency. Um, SCAG has their own regional plan, um, that deals with, uh, relying more heavily on public transportation. To reduce greenhouse gases, um, address climate change, um, and, and reduce the, the commuting. That occurs to employment centers from more inland areas. I'd also like to add that there was a, a last-minute change before they did the, the Rena allocation to all the cities. They, they had in, in previous years distributed the units, which have gone up a lot in the last eight years. To, you know, all cities within the inland empire, the coastal, uh, regions, LA County, Orange County, Ventura County. This time they did a shift from, uh, they took units away from inland areas like San Bernardino and Riverside County. And they gave LA County and Orange County, particularly coastal cities. Um, that, the, a large share of that allocation. That had originally been allocated to the inland empire. So cities like Hawthorne have seen an, a, a, a large increase. In the number of units that need to be planned for. So cities don't develop housing. These requirements are that the city basically have the zoning capacity to accommodate these units. The city is not held to actually building them or making sure that, you know, it's development community that, that develops units. The city just must plan for the, the accommodation of those units. I can't speak to specifically why El Segundo's numbers were as low as they are. Um, it may have something to do. Uh, with the transportation, because I do know that it is a very, uh, industrial and commercial area. Uh, but if they don't have a large population to begin with, that might have been a factor. Uh, in why they did not receive a higher allocation. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I've reviewed the methodology very carefully. Um, and it's, it is very complicated, but I'd be happy to answer any question.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, before I ask the question, um, let's go back a little bit because, uh, if you guys recall. Some of you that's been in this council that Arnie Shotberry wrote a letter in, in February twenty, uh, twenty. Uh, about the Rena numbers, because when they first released the Rena numbers. Uh, they have Hawthorne with even bigger number. Uh, because that was like a sample. Uh, and then I recall I went to a meeting, uh, with SCAG. And, and, and South Bay cog, where we voiced our concern that, uh, Hawthorne numbers was bu- higher than. All these other cities. And they listened and they went back and de- decreased the numbers. Uh, now, my question to, uh, Ms. Mosman. It is also true that the, the formula count, the population of Hawthorne and also the income level. Of people living in the city of Hawthorne. Because, because I think, uh, one of the cri- criteria was because Hawthorne is such a very low income. You know, because we are below, uh, medium, uh, family, mean the income level, right? Cause for example, Hawthorne, I believe is, is about fifty-six or even forty-six. And then the counting was higher than ours. So, so they take in consideration also the fact that the people of Hawthorne is. Very low on their income level compared to the county and those other cities. And then we have a population, you know, close to ninety thousand people, but seventy percent of the people are very low income. So can you address that issue, please?
Yes, I, I think I can. So SCAG came up, in their methodology. They started, um, out with identifying which communities, which cities would qualify as a disadvantaged community. And that was basically defined by, um, how many peop- how many households, um, li- are living. In, uh, poverty and high segregation. So that's what, how SCAG identified a disadvantaged community. Any city where more than fifty percent of the population. Um, was living in, uh, in those conditions was designated as a disadvantaged community. And from what I've seen from the SCAG backup data, Hawthorne did meet that, uh, designation. And so because Hawthorne met that designation, the way the Rena methodology works. Is they do a first pass at allocating Rena numbers, right? So the first pass is they take. They look at what the city's actually provided in terms of, this is what they say. They look at what the projected need is, the existing need, and then the employment growth that's reported by the cities. And then they do an initial allocation for the entire region. Only eight hundred thousand units were allocated in that first pass. So there's the, the residual, right? Six hundred thousand units. So what they did is they allocated, um, the, in the second pass, the majority of those residual units. To communities that are not disadvantaged communities. Using a formula that took into account, uh, again, employment and transit as well for the non. DAC or disadvantaged communities. So.
Yeah, thank you for that, because that was exactly when I raised the question, why Hawthorne was having these big numbers. That was one of the explanation they gave me. So thank, thank you for bringing it up.
I, I did want to also just follow up, but, I mean, the, the region, you know, did receive a very large allocation of units at one point three. Much larger than, than has ever been uh, allocated. And that came from the state. The state does a population project, so I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, there's a large, there not large numbers coming from the state of California. And this was SCAG's best attempt at distributing them uh, i- in a way that was somewhat equitable.
Thank you for that. Uh, through the chair.
Yes.
Just let, let me say that, look, when we are going to come up with a plan, how we're going to address this issue. We have to keep in mind that we not against uh, development. We want people to begin thinking about how to create a blended model of housing that will feed the need of the city of Hawthorne. So I understand, you know, that there have to be moderate, moderate, moderate income, have to be low income, have to be very low income. So we need to start to talk to these developers about to create a blended model that will include all those four categories that we need to satisfy our, our action plan that we're gonna do for, for this eighth year uh, in the future. So when we talk about develop, like uh, Mi- Ms. Mosman said, very good, the city does not develop housing. We need to come up with a plan and, and, and try to meet the developer halfway. And say, you cannot just build one hundred percent uh, market value apartments or, or, or townhomes. But you have to give us a blend model. Ten percent very low, uh, twenty percent uh, low income, uh, thirty percent, you know, uh, moderate income. So we need to come up with those criterias that we need to tell the developer, this is the way the city should be going. Not to build dense apartment for just market rate. We need to address this issue, because we know people of Hawthorne do need affordable housing, so we need to, to think about that. Thank you.
Alright, so where are we at? Alright.
I make a motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Greg, Art, and Ms. Mosman.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Okay, I'll be voting yes, because uh, uh, as discussed, anything else other than that would be unfavorable for the city. Even though I'm not happy with the concept of uh, hi- high density housing, actually this serves, this serves as a uh, kind of a stop here. As to rising numbers, so go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay. Uh, city manager, item twenty-three.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is to consider the vacancy that is in the office of the city treasurer. Um, as we all know, with the election of David Patterson to the city council, uh, the city treasurer position is now vacant. Under state law, city council is permitted to decide whether to fill this vacancy by an appointment or call a special election. Uh, appointments uh, for these types of vacancies are often made by appointment. Uh, by doing so, it avoids the cost of a special election and ensures that position is filled quickly. If the city council decides to move forward with a special election, uh, the county of Los Angeles has advised that the costs to conduct such election are approximately three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. An election would likely be held in November of twenty twenty-one. Uh, and then if the council uh, would like to move forward with an appointment process. Uh, we have uh, outlined a, a process in the agenda bill. I'm happy to go over that with you. Um, you know, perhaps uh, if you decide to move down uh, the appointment route. Um, either way, uh, the city council needs to make a decision by February sixth on how this is going to be handled. Um, and so staff's recommendation is for the council to discuss this item, decide on the appropriate process to fill this vacancy and direct staff as appropriate.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I would propose for an appointment and with very, you know, transparent. And let us, uh, you know, have a application process uh, through the city clerk's office, that will get the application and submit application, then we'll review and then we'll decide who is the best candidate that fit the interests of Hawthorne, the citizens, and best qualified.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would agree. I think uh, it's, it's a fair process. Um, and I think that uh, it, it uh, the cost of having a special election is, is really not necessary. Incurring that cost is not necessary. We would have to have an acting city, uh, an acting treasurer for several months anyway before we even had the election. And I, I, I just think it uh, it, it's not cost effective to do that. I think it's a fairer process uh, uh, to have um, an appointment and have an application process, and we choose the um, we ame- we, we ultimately elect or choose um, the uh, the person to appoint. And um, I think everyone will feel as though the city will, the, the city residents will feel as though they've all had an opportunity to weigh in and, and be a part of the process. So I think um, I think, I agree that we should go ahead with an appointment.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think appointment process does make sense. I do have a question. Do we have a deadline for when we have to have appointed uh, a treasurer? So is that deadline February sixth for somebody to have been appointed?
I would like it, I would like it to occur maybe a couple of weeks before February sixth, just to be safe.
But i- is that the deadline? Someone has to be appointed by that time?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, to the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious to know what that would look like. Um, I, I heard, you know, application process, obviously, language needs to be drafted. I hope that the city council has an opportunity to provide language. More importantly, I hope applicants are um, you know, well-versed with regards to experience. Uh, you know, that speaks to um, the position and what it entails. Uh, their background and qualifications, I think that's important. And uh, I encourage um, candidates that were on the ballot to apply as well. So uh, obviously, you will get a, a full um, transparent um, process for um, all those that are interested.
Right, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I'm looking at what was in the agenda packet about a proposed process to appoint and the concept of doing something similar to appointing a commissioner makes sense. I don't agree with the dates that are, that are proposed. Um, I do believe that uh, we should take applications and they should be screened and vetted for um, relevant knowledge and experience. Uh, before they even came to the council to vote on and make a decision about. Um, but not just that, this is actually related to something else I, I, you know, I wanted to bring up. Um, I think it's important that we really put the word out. Um, I believe that Hawthorne has done a poor job of communicating to the public uh, and to all the residents. And so I want there to be a real strategy for making sure all the citizens is new, that this is something they can apply for.
Okay. Uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, or how many, how many local cities have elected uh, treasurers?
I don't know all cities, but I, I, I know many cities have elected treasurers.
Many, but.
Many, well, I, I, I mean, so I'm not aware of any city that does not have an elected treasurer in, in our immediate region.
Mr. City Attorney, do you know?
I haven't researched that. I certainly can. And provided information to you. The procedure that's in the agenda bill is the procedure that was used, I believe, five or six years ago. And the dates are basically uh, in there to make sure that we meet the February sixth deadline. Um, so these are all just proposed, let's say.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, the applications are, would be available maybe even by tomorrow, and they would just be the same commission applications.
No, yeah, yeah. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support my, my colleagues here. All I'm just saying is that um, in all respect for our city clerk, and you know, and uh, and our former city uh, treasurer, uh, Mr. Patterson, but I'd like to know how many cities actually have elected um, officers in those two seats. Just to kind of see, maybe that might be a question that we might want to move away from that and just have like somebody that's just uh, full-time on the, I'm, I'm talking specifically on the uh, treasures position only. I'm not talking about the other one. Uh, so could you, could you send a, a, give me, give us a
A survey?
A survey, yeah, an information, please, just to kind of see that, and then, just so, just so my colleagues will know, but.
Through the chair.
Here, could we also make sure that you identify uh, who's appointed, who's elected, and who's full-time, who's part-time?
Yeah, no, no, but do you understand what I mean, uh, uh, Councilmember Patterson? I mean, I'm just saying, because at some point, you know.
Through the chair. Okay, so, so just to keep focus, because we have until February sixth to fill the position. Because remember, uh, the position was, uh, people of Hawthorne voted for four years. So anything you change cannot be done until after the term is completed.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not trying, I'm not trying to upset that process, I'm not, at all, at all. I'm just trying to say, just for information, because.
Yeah, I agree with uh, Mr. David Patterson that, you know, to put more transparency on it. The application for the commission plus, I want to see the resume, okay? I want the application for the, for the commission plus a resume of, of the individual, okay? Not just the application for the, for the city commission. I want to see their resume. Because like they applying for a job.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you know, it's my understanding that there's many cities, many, that appoint their treasurer.
Yeah.
Uh, and the same goes with city clerk. Um, so I, I, I would also request uh, from the city attorney's office to look at our uh, parliament procedures when it comes to our organization and the requirement thereof, a body uh, of those um, that are not only the decision makers but speak to, you know, the city clerk as the secretary and our treasurer as the finance. And so that's very important that we follow parliament, par- parliament procedures. Um, and uh, follow the rule of thumb for the many years that the city has been incorporated here and have been doing just that.
Through the chair.
Good idea.
I know that um, some, since we're General Law City, a lot of stuff is, is um, discussed by uh, the state law, or, you know, uh, as far as everything from compensation to um, who's elected, who's not, and all that stuff in General Law City. But um, I would like to suggest that we provide more time for applications. I believe uh, a deadline of December thirty-first, which is what's proposed in our agenda packet, I think it's too soon. Uh, I like to propose more time, give it to, to January.
January what?
At least January fifteenth.
Yeah, that's uh, pretty close.
How about a week into, like, we, I'd get, I'd extend it another week, but not like that much more. Look, I, I, like, I, I understand what you're saying, but like, those people who are interested would should be able to get their butts in gear and, and apply for this. This is like, I mean, if they're really interested, they'll, I mean, all the, all the usual suspects will apply, they will hear about it. Everybody's actually wondering how we're going to do it. So there's already people like that are uh, out there interested in this. They're just waiting to, they're, they're inquiring every, like, every so often with the city clerk's office. But what do you, but, I mean, what do you think? I mean, I, I mean, I'm.
Making sure that the word gets out to more than just the usual suspects.
The usual suspects, huh?
Through the, through the chair.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, was that it, Mr. uh, Mr. uh, Councilmember Patterson? Alright, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Like, i- if we, if we, if we extend the, let's say, uh, until the first week in January, because you know, it's holidays, a lot of people not pay attention to, to stuff like this. Then uh, you know, we should be available for special meetings to make sure that we meet the deadline of February sixth. So that's, that's the basic.
Absolutely.
So we should be able to do special meeting, because we have to do probably special meeting to review the application, to review the resume. And then to figure out who, who is qualified, who is not qualified. So that is what uh, we are elected to do, so we should be able to have special meeting uh, before uh, the deadline. Even if it's two me- two special meetings, we'll go into two special meeting after the deadline of, say, January sixth or something like that.
Okay.
Through the chair, we also have to consider um, how long it's going to take us to go through these applications. We really don't know how many people will apply, so it may be the usual suspects plus many more. And however many there are, we will have to go through them, so we must leave ourselves enough time. Um, I don't, I don't want to cut it too close. I think um, I think, I think the first week of Feb- of January should probably be, if not, if it's not going to be December seventeen. Um, I mean, if it's not going to be December thirtieth, it, it definitely, I think, should be the following week. I don't think we should wait any longer to receive.
That's what I said, first week in January.
So the s- the seventh or eighth?
Yeah.
To the chair.
Yes.
I just want to remind folks that um, it is the holidays. Uh, New Year's is, you know, around the corner. Folks don't come back until usually the second or third week in January to start um, work. Um, and more importantly, we can't, you know, full transparency here, we can't rush this. We need to make sure we're doing our due dil- diligence to assure that it's out in the public, that it's posted across any and all um, you know, internet, social media, uh, word of mouth, et cetera. Because um, you know, the last thing you want is folks saying that they weren't aware or they didn't have an opportunity, because there wasn't enough time and they were out of town and they didn't get back in time to fill out an application. So um, you know, we just want to be fair. And there should, we, and we should all work collectively to assure that.
Uh, to the chair, I make a motion to accept uh, for us to do an appointment through uh, application process. Application due date, January eighth by five o'clock, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
A second. Did somebody else second that?
I seconded.
Oh, okay, you beat me. Uh, alright, you click on the drum. Alright, roll call vote.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Reyes English?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflect, reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
The chair.
Yes.
Since the appointment process has been decided, does the council want to um, schedule special meeting dates for us to, to target, to get back um, and have these conversations?
Um, can you?
I think the dates we proposed uh, in the agenda bill are probably uh, not going to work at this point, at least one of them.
Can you pulse the, can you pulse us with like, uh, can you think about it a little bit better? Because right now, I mean, we could go on forever, trying to figure, we don't have, we might have to look at our calendars to see who's available. Maybe you could do like the survey of, of each of the council members, myself, to see what two days are appropriate, and then you could just kind of announce it.
We can just tentatively just say the next uh, thereafter, the next uh, three Tuesdays, which would be January twelfth, which is a regular city council me- meeting, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, which is another regular city council meeting.
Absolutely.
And that still puts us uh, about one week before the deadline.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll say go for it.
So the council's reg- regularly scheduled to meet on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and it will also hold the nineteenth.
Let's take a, let's take a quick look at that.
Well, by, uh, by the twelve, we should get a package, right? Of the, of the applicants. So then the nineteen will come together to decide. And then if there is any question, the twenty-sixth will finalize it.
So, so I think the, the question would be, do you have any interest in, in discussing it on the twelfth? Cause if not, then I think you're right, Mayor Protem, we'd be looking at the nineteenth and twenty-sixth to actually deal with this.
Through the chair, I, I would imagine that those that, let's say, met the first hurdle of application, relevant experience may have opportunity to address the council on the twelfth. Um, I agree nineteen would be the earliest date which should be decision be, be made.
Yeah, yeah, on the twelve, what we, because since you're going to get those applicants on the, on Feb- on, on the eighth, that is a Friday. So you'd only have Monday to put the package together for all the five of us, right? So then on Tuesday, we will see those applicants. So then if, if, if we want to bring anybody to talk to us, so then they will have to be on Zoom on, on the twelve. And then on the nineteen, we will have one week to go through those applicants. And then on the nineteen, we'll come together to, to talk about, you know, Together to, to talk about, you know, who is qualified, who is not, and start the elimination process.
Okay, understood, so just to be clear, the, the twelfth, we won't be talking to any of the candidates. We're gonna talk on the nineteenth at the earliest.
I would say yes, because, because the twelve, we would have to receive those applicant, and then we'll say. Okay, out of these twelve applicant, we want to, we want to hear from six on the nineteen.
Okay.
Follow me, David?
Yeah, follow, I'm making.
So, uh, you know, one, one other issue, um, and this might required a, 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 another vote of the council, um, maybe not. Uh, city hall closes at four thirty on the eighth. And so if we want to actually have a meaning, meaningful process, can we take that, maybe say maybe noon, and that allows our staff to. Compile the applications and get those out to you by the end of the day?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, I approve by noon. Application due date by January eighth by noon, ratified my motion.
Thank you.
So and uh, to the chair, I just ask Paul, uh, Dr. Jimenez, so you, um. You are very good on the social media, so get Joss and your interns to, to, you know, to get all the. All the uh, social media going, and then maybe we'll advertise on, on the uh, the, our. Hawthorne Tribune, uh, website, uh, you know, all of those, okay?
Yeah.
Definitely.
I think we, we trust that you're gonna do a good job, you have that all set up, you have the, what is it called? The social media suite. Ready to go. Yeah, we don't need hootsuite. We have Jimenez suite. Okay, thank you.
Oh, it, it should be noted that uh, six years ago, when we did this method, the reason why we had an earlier deadline. Was there was also a request from the council that the background checks be done. But if you don't want a background check, then, you know, this later deadline is fine.
Well, I think. We could decide to do background check, maybe if we sell, if by the, on the nineteen, if we decide that we're going to select. A particular person or one or two, the, the finalist for the twenty sixth, maybe then, maybe we'll give one week to do it to brand. Background check on those particulars finalists.
Okay, and I'll, I'll work with the, to see if that's possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we don't need to do all background checking, all the applicants, right? So, yeah, by the nineteen, we will have an idea. Uh, who is going to be the finalist, and then we'll do back, uh, background check.
Okay.
Thank you, Russell.
Okay, so. Do we have the vote? So we already voted, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Number twenty four. We will be holding item number twenty eight until after the council votes on the consent calendar, which is items uh twenty five to thirty seven. Except items number twenty eight, Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have items twenty five to thir- thirty seven on my consent calendar, uh, with except item twenty eight for your consideration.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to pull a couple of items for further discussion. Uh, I'd like to pull item thirty, I'd like to pull item thirty three. I'd like to pull number twenty eight.
So what was it, thirty, thirty three, and what?
Twenty eight.
Yeah, I think. Um, I think that, I think it's item number twenty seven, twenty eight, uh. Thirty. Thirty three. Not so much thirty five, I don't know what this number thirty six is, I'd like to understand that one, um. And uh. Number thirty seven.
Thirty seven, all right, I make a motion on all other items?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Discussion twenty seven?
Um, to, um, our city manager, Eric. Um, I, I understand there's a, there's going to be a name change, but at the same time, with regards to the uh. Um, Hawthorne Executive Group, uh, H E G and its current uh members, which is the H E G president and vice president. I think ultimately, we need to re- uh, replace the um, vice president, I'm noting, you know, potential conflict, seeing that. Mr. Norris, Norris is the H E G vice president and should be, uh, should be excluded from signing his own classification. So I'd like to see that uh possibly go to either um, the, the city secretary or. Um. Perhaps, uh, you know, an, an, uh, another board member.
So I, I think that makes sense, and, and we can have the president uh tell us what other board member um would be appropriate to sign that document.
Okay, thank you. With regards to um, item number twenty eight.
Let's make a motion on that, on twenty seven, let's go one by one, after you discuss them. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote, roll call vote?
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I, uh, discussion on I, on number twenty eight, Councilman?
Um, may I make a statement before?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I've been asked by Councilmember Patterson uh to make a statement of recusal under the Political Reform Act. Uh, he will not be participating due to a potential conflict of interest. As it is reasonably foreseeable that his participation may have a material financial effect. On his personal finances pursuant to F P P C regulation one eight seven zero two point five. A personal financial effect is based on the council member's regular and consistent financial assistance. To an individual currently residing in city-owned housing, as such, he will be recusing him, himself. At this time, I ask that our meeting administrator, Eric Chavez, place Councilmember Patterson in the waiting room. While uh Ms. English discusses this item, and also um after the council votes on this item.
Well, which item was that?
Nine, number twenty eight.
Okay, okay, so we're good. Okay, Councilmember Patterson, you're gonna go to the waiting room.
Think he's already there, huh?
No, no, he, since we can see him, it means that he's still present. Can you hear us, uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I'm not in the waiting room yet.
Working on that, one second.
Can, can you simply just step out of his office? Will that suffice?
He's out.
Now.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, with regards to the um, um, item number twenty eight, I understand that uh, there's going to have to be uh. Rent increases to Hawthorne Housing uh that we currently have, however. Had a question on how many families will this impact, and more importantly, how many units are we talking about? And um, has there been a, a now, uh, appropriate written notice? To those uh rent increases to, to the tenants that reside currently in city property, so those are some of my questions.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Kimberly Mack, our housing manager, uh, should be on the line, and she could answer these, uh, these questions. I, I will say, you know, in general, uh, this is an item that we're bringing forward to the council, uh, to give you a heads up that. Um, today, we're not asking for any action, it's just a receive and file, uh, but certainly in January, we are going to be presenting a plan to increase these rents. Uh, and so the questions um are, are very relevant. Um, and Kimberly, are you on the line?
I am on the line, thank you. So, uh, at the stance right now, the city owns thirty eight units. Um, so potentially, all thirty eight units will be impacted, except for the three vacant units that we currently have, that will be bought to. The correct H C D or home uh rent limits. And to date, no notifications have gone out, as we have not fully discussed the measure as to whether or not it's something you will agree with. And so, January twelfth, we will providing a detailed five-year plan for our intent to, to perform rent increases on these properties. Providing percentages and amounts per unit, and also giving a proper ninety-day notice to those tenants regarding those rent increases.
And how soon, Kimberly, do you think, um, those notices would go out after we, uh, we get that uh, as a council?
You approve it on the twelfth, they go out on the thirteen.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, hi, Kimberly, so, so is my understanding also that when you guys come back in January, you will have a, a plan that the. Maybe the increase is not going to be one time, but it's going to be incremented?
That is correct, we plan to um, increase it over a period of five years. Um, to spread out the amount of rent increases that are needed to really assist these units to bring in them to self-sufficient status. Um, yeah, for a period of five years to bring them current to the current max H C D rent limits.
All right, thank you, to the chair. Eric, I'm gonna ask Kimberly a question, so don't be alarmed. Do we know the status, uh, how, how many applicant for the tenant assistance program have been approved or in the process of being approved?
Well, we're in the process of doing that, um, also, that is coming to the uh city council on the twelfth, however, we did receive a hundred and sixty-five applications. We have already denied ten applications due to failure to comply with providing things like identification or owners not willing to participate and things of that nature. No one has been denied due to income, because uh, right now, everyone can self-certify. So it is a matter of, uh, the clients that are going through our tenant rental assistance program, completing the required lead-based paint. Inspections, and then we can move forward with payment with, for those residents, but we're still processing a lot of applications at this time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And to the chair again, Kimberly, um.
Yes, go ahead.
Will, will you bring to our attention, uh, after making an assessment on, um. Whether or not there's maybe still families or those struggling to even make that, uh, that rent increase?
Oh, absolutely, sure, yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Oh, he cannot vote.
Oh, sorry, my bad, Councilmember Valentine?
Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, to the chair, I have number thirty, item thirty for discussion.
Yeah.
Bring in Mr. Patterson. Eric Chavez, are you bringing him in? I invited him back in, just waiting for him to.
Okay, he's back, we could proceed.
All right.
Um, I understand that we currently have uh, a need for animal services. And that we're looking at the Love Joy Foundation Sheltering Services for um, a contractual service of fifty-five thousand. However, um, I did some research, and I did find that uh, the Love Joy Foundation uh has a suspension. Uh, registered, and so can we please table this item? Until we could get a certified copy that they have complied in our current, so that we could be able to um. Move forward with the, the contract at hand, but I ask colleagues and uh, city manager, city attorney to please, um. If we can, table the item until we get a copy of their uh certificate of LLC in, in right standing.
I motion to table.
Nice second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Reyes English?
This is yes to table.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes, the table.
Councilmember Patterson? Oh, you're muted.
Councilmember Patterson, you vote.
You mute.
Which item is this?
Thirty.
Thirty.
You're voting if you're yes or no to table?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes to table. Next item?
Um, for discussion again to the chair, item number thirty three. Um, it's my understanding that this is a reserved police officer. That is currently and has been working uh, as the title of, of uh. Director of Medical Services with the Hawthorne Police Department, I just want to understand, uh, first of all. The time in which he's been working under that, that title, that position, and has he been receiving already the allocated amount in which. They're looking uh to do uh on this item, uh, the, the amount is um. Three hundred and seventy-two thousand, and it's roughly a hundred and eighty thousand, um. Uh, that's the salary play, pay, and it's also my understanding that the, the. Person in question would have an opportunity to contract out to any other uh agency. Um, which I'm not necessarily in agreement, and I have some concerns with regards to the agreement uh alone, uh, in general. Um, I don't understand currently the need, especially during COVID, I think it's very important that we. Safeguard um, any further expenditures, especially expenditures in that large dollar amount. Um, I understand he's a um, reserved police officer, and I do understand that he's been very. Helpful in assisting uh current staff, and I understand all of that, I also. Um, did some research, and he's already listing the city of Hawthorne as one of his medical offices. And there's another office that's listed with his name, which is McCormick Ambulance Services. So, the question is, again, uh, is he already working under that position? And is he already working with that dollar amount, that annual dollar amount? Um, because if he is, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and I think there's some serious concerns with regards to um. Ethical ethic, uh, ethical procedures, moreover, um, any type of mis- misuse of funds. So, can I get someone to please help me and, and answer the questions that I bring forth? City Attorney, City Manager?
The chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Captain Eric Lane uh is on the meeting, and he will be able to answer these questions for us.
Uh, good evening, ma'am, this is Eric Lane.
Good evening.
Uh, so to answer the question, uh, Dr. Nakagawa is actually currently a uh sworn police officer with us. As of last January, he's no longer reserved, uh, he's paid currently as a police officer. Uh, as far as the medical director role, he is not currently being compensated uh for that position. He's being compensated as his primary role now as a police officer. Uh, the funds allocated to uh cover the medical director portion. Are going to come from the coronavirus emergency response fund, which is roughly a hundred and one. A hundred and forty-one thousand dollars over the next two years, which are allocated to pay for the services of a medical director. Uh, as far as medical director of McCormick's ambulants, uh, that is correct, he has contracted his services there. Uh, Dr. Nakagawa holds two medical certifications, one is emergency medicine, and the other is. Emergency medical uh services, which makes him uniquely qualified for this specific position now that we're requesting for him to be. Um, moved into for the medical director of the city. Uh, throughout the pandemic, he's been uh very, very helpful, helped guide city policy, uh. City information, uh, testing of our officers and of our city employees. To make sure that uh their health was uh at the forefront of this pandemic.
So he, it's my understanding, he's had the title of medical director Hawthorne Police Department, and has had all that listed. Um, just in uh public, since when?
Uh, he's currently been listed as a medical director, but not compensated for that. He, and when, as far as medical director goes, he's overseen our medical programs, our tactical medicine, E M T paramedics. Uh, as well as the officers that are trained to respond to calls for service. Uh, and as we've transitioned to uh having a more robust footprint in the city to provide uh. Response times and aid those that are currently injured uh prior to EMS arrival. to provide uh response times and aid those that are currently injured uh prior to EMS arrival. Uh we've needed to uh increase our footprint and protect us from liability and protect the city employees arriving to these uh calls for service in order to provide the medical uh resources as necessary.
I I have information that I received that says basically the coronavirus, uh which is the the CARES Act's funds of only seventy thousand five hundred for the next two years, which is a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um that's what I received from um staff. And then with regards to article number seven of the agreement, page three of seven, uh it speaks to the public department, uh public safety department organization that he has uh uh he may enter into contract for medical service director uh through other cities and other um public safety agencies, which you know, uh uh I I believe there's a conflict there with regards to uh what we're trying to do here. Um moreover, the dollar amount in which we're looking to pay three hundred and seventy-two thousand, it is my hope that the city council will take a look at this further. Um perhaps wait a year or so to see where we're at with COVID nineteen. It it where we should be addressing the issues of need and medical assistance and mental assistance is in our homeless population. Um with the Department of 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 public, um you know, public health, um a department that has a well-versed uh group of people that helps with these types of situations, um addressing the the homeless needs, the mental illness needs and that uh type of uh audience. And I say this because um in our discussions throughout the debates, I heard it from everybody that ran for office, that homeless was one of their priorities, that they wanted to work to address homeless, they wanted to assure that they eradicate homeless. And so all of this is very important. And I think that dollar amount is very extreme for one individual when we have many still yet in our city that have yet to receive service. So I asked my council colleagues to take further look at this. Moreover, I asked for the table to be uh item to be tabled and to look at for further consideration at a later time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
I second.
What are you, I'm sorry. Mayor, I'm sorry, mayor. What is your motion?
The motion is, I made the motion on the existing item.
I had, to the chair, I made, I made a motion to table the item.
No, I made a motion on the item itself.
Mr. Mayor, just hold on because I need more questions, okay?
Who's next?
I, let me just finish. The the, this, this, this was a discussion. So the discussion I just made and there's still further discussion going on. But I do make it clear to make a motion to table the item. So I I obtain a further discussion.
No, no. Well, I made a motion and you you second whatever the motion was that I intended.
I was still under discussion, mayor.
No, but you can't be under discussion if you made a second, so let's clarify.
Table the item and then there's mayor mayor Pro Tem.
When you second something, that means that there's a motion. That ends the discussion when you make a second. So let's clarify that.
Mayor Pro Tem had a discussion and so does Valentine.
Council member Reyes English, it's very simple. If you make a second, you ended the discussion by make taking the motion and making a second.
Well.
Pro Tem, go ahead.
I am gonna, I'm gonna defer back city attorneys, city attorney.
Council member Reyes English, Mayor Pro Tem's next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There there was a misunderstanding over there uh between you, Mr. Mayor, and and Councilwoman English, because she was, she was doing a motion to do something and then you make a motion to do something else. So there was two different. Russell, um let's add uh Ms. English mentioned about on uh page three of seven, article seven. It said agreement with the police firefight agency outside of Hawthorne. Can you read the paragraph because it said something, the contract will be between the city and the outside public safety agency? It doesn't say the doctor and the agency. It says the city of Hawthorne. So can you read that, clarify that for me, please?
Okay, and also uh Captain Lane, can you also uh uh address that as well? That particular section.
Uh yes, what section was that again?
Okay, page three of seven, right? And number seven, because Ms. English uh read it uh that the the uh the medical office can, you know, find, you know, sign an agreement with somebody outside agency. But when I read, it says the contract will be between the city and the outside public safety agency. It doesn't say that Ms. Nagagawa will do the contract, but the city of Hawthorne would have to do the contract with outside agency.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right, I don't know for the question, Mr. Mayor. I think uh David Patterson have one question.
Yeah, through the, through the chair, I have a couple of questions. Um I just want to be clear that this has no fiscal impact to our general budget.
So the only fiscal impact is the officer's salary, uh Dr. Nakagawa's salary, which is already being paid as part of our current uh budget and future budget, since he's a employee, police officer of the city of Hawthorne. And then the remainder will be through the coronavirus emergency uh response fund.
Including benefits, like all all, anything in excess of this one sixty-eight number, all of that's covered by the.
Will be covered by his, by the 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 police budget.
To the chair.
No, the anything in excess of this one sixty-eight is gonna be covered by.
City manager.
So uh ju- just to be clear and answer to council member Patterson's question, um the the annual salary benefits for the police officer position, which is essentially that what we're considering the core or the base of of this position, is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The difference um making up the additional salary and additional benefits uh will be funded by the grant. At some point uh when that grant expires or it's not allowable, the police department is already pursuing other revenue streams to um to offset those additional expenditures. The entire uh intention of this position is to cost the city no more than what it costs to maintain a full-time police officer on the books.
One other question.
Yes.
The money's coming from essentially COVID pandemic money, correct? Or because of the COVID pandemic, this money's available? Is that correct?
To the chair.
Yes.
So that that is, that is correct for right now. So so that grant, uh Captain Lane, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a two-year grant.
That's correct.
And so um uh on- once those funds are exhausted, we will find, need to find uh an additional revenue source uh to to bring in um that's directly related to those services to offset them. Um hence the uh articles, I believe it's seven, in the agreement, which allows the city to contract with other municipalities uh for these services.
So so my my other question is, um I guess what value will this medical director provide entire community? Right, that's also being affected by COVID nineteen?
Yes.
So I'm here, so so I I understood that the directors will be providing a lot of value to the police department. Was there gonna be any services or value provided to the entire community that's also being affected by by this pandemic?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, so not only does this allow our officers to continue the life-saving efforts uh that they currently do with the use of Narcan for opioid overdoses, AED deployments for people with cardiac arrest, as well as tourniquets and bleeding uh items to stop bleeding. Um it also allows us to teach the public community classes, which we've done before. Uh we've taught staff, including uh city staff, um CPR, first aid, AED. Uh and we we, with the exception of the pandemic, uh we regularly run community classes, which we publicize, put out and gone around to community events to teach these classes. Uh and Dr. Nakagawa is uh will be the focal point of those classes as well as the governing governing body to allow uh the officers to be able to to implement those tactics and techniques.
How are those, how were those classes paid for previously?
Uh usually it was through different events that we would be out at through uh the neighborhood watch or at the department. Um and at those times, uh Dr. Nakagawa wasn't always uh available. Officers would host it if possible. Um but as our program has gotten bigger, um with the uh continued uh efforts, especially with Narcan and AED in order to have the abilities to purchase those items, you need to have a medical director with oversight of those programs in over, in order to uh effectively run those programs through the county. And that's what the uh value that Dr. Nakagawa has brought.
Uh one other question, would it be possible for that medical director to uh support the city in its COVID testing? Um you know, that that we do offer throughout the community or that does exist?
I I I can answer that question. The the vision for for this position is is not that. Um yeah, I think certainly Dr. Nakagawa uh is helping uh the the city staff and executive level navigate uh the pandemic uh and make sure that we're we're operating in in a safe manner um and really uh separating fact from fiction as it relates to this deadly disease. Um but not, not intended to help with um actual uh COVID nineteen testing uh out in the community.
That's it. One more question.
Okay.
To the chair one more time, the
Yes.
The contract reads that um he would be providing uh mutual services to um staff and police. And so I'm just curious how how that would look like for uh services to staff. Um the only concerns I have again is the, you know, large number. Um and I would like to maybe see him better in a role of like health and human services that addresses the needs of our homeless population. And um that 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 would be helpful for the city to inquire something like this so that we could um be able to get additional funding and services through grants and programs that could address all of those needs, not just the SOFA uh Department of Medical Services. How, you know, how is that in a, in a sense gonna help? Uh we're not gonna see it. We're we're not gonna see it. I mean, call out some things like this. Um so that that's, that's the curiosity I had. That's the reason I I I question the whole agreement. But I think if he were to look at more of a human services role and a department like this, I, it would be better served. Um and with that, city attorney, I'd like to withdraw my motion um for anything other than tabling the item.
I'll make the motion.
All right, so I'm I'm again, what is the status of these motions? There are two conflicting motions.
Motion to approve, motion to approve as as exists, item thirty-three.
Second.
Roll call vote. All right, and uh just in case I have a newborn in my arms, so there might be some crying. Uh council member Reyes English?
No.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, except for council member Reyes English voting no. Any other questions, items?
Um with the uh items number thirty-five, uh Vaughn, I I want to uh congratulate.
English, um I think this is, this was not, was this one that we pulled or she?
No, I circled all of them. I said number thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven.
No, no, seriously, because I I was keeping track. I mean, if it's the case, we'll go and discuss it. City attorney, can you take a look at thirty-five?
Yeah, I had uh, I also had that we had.
Voted on it, right?
Number thirty-six and number thirty-seven.
Yeah, for discussion.
So which ones were pulled of Mr. City Attorney? Because the thing is, if we voted on all other items, we just want to make sure that like after they look at the video, we don't get all, we miss something.
I circled, I circled item number thirty, item number thirty-three, item number thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven, and I voted on everything else.
Mr. City Attorney, what do you have on record?
I have that uh the council voted on number thirty-five, but I would um uh just um Ms. English, uh go ahead and and uh
I'm discussing, right?
Discuss it and maybe uh one of you, either you or maybe one of your other colleagues would like to uh to do a motion to reconsider that one.
Yeah.
It was not so much a reconsideration, it was just a discussion. Um I already had voted, I think, in the previous. Um but this was just uh with regards to the trash can art uh beautification initiative that uh is implemented uh, you know, moving forward and um inquiring on artists to um you know, maybe do some other work in some other areas. That was it. And then I didn't have uh number item number thirty-six. Um I didn't understand what is um ever gov permitting land management system.
To the chair, I I can answer that question.
Yes.
So this is um, the the software is um, the manufacturer is Tyler. Um the actual system that they deploy is called EnterGov. And this is, relates to the virtual city hall project that that the council approved, um us entering to agreement at the last meeting. Uh and so this is uh 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 we have grant funds to to fund a lot of that system uh and also grant funds to help us with the housing element update. Uh we've been awarded those funds and this item, you know, uh uh allows us to appropriate the funds to use them for the purpose uh which we outlined in our grant application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and I seconded. Please, I'll do a roll call vote. All right, council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yeah.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Okay, so uh on number twenty-eight, we already uh voted on that one and uh council member Patterson was recused on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so. Uh, we just voted on thirty-seven.
No, we voted on thirty-six.
Thirty-seven, council member Reyes, English?
Yeah, again, um the the uh approval for this um de novo planning group, um is this, is this something that we're currently looking at and need their help with? And that's the dollar amount, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-five? Uh which department is that?
So um to the chair, uh thi- this, this relates to the the arena allocation conversation that we had uh a few minutes ago with the council. Um and this is actually to hire the consultant to do that work, that's gonna uh come back with the housing element update for the council's consideration. Hopefully, early summer twenty twenty-one.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move. Second. All right, council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Okay, uh Mr. City Attorney?
Uh yes, I have items number thirty-nine, forty and forty-one for your consideration.
I move.
Second. Please roll call vote. All right, council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Okay, next items. Council member Valentine, discussion?
Yes, thank you. Um so the South Bay Council of Governments um uh had a special meeting, special board meeting on November thirtieth. And we voted uh to take action to write to the um governor and also to uh the the uh the 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 um county uh concerning the distress that has been caused because of the the lockdowns and the shutdowns in terms of the distress being caused to the restaurants and the businesses in general. In those letters, they're very similar letters, there, but the wording is different because we were sending them to different entities. But basically, we asked that the um in terms of the um, in terms of the counties, the county, I'll take that one first. We wanted to ask that the South Bay cities were requesting that we be, we be looked at as our own region. In other words, we wanted to ask the county to look at us as a regions, with a region-specific lens and and give us the health order restrictions that comport with regional data concerning us. Because the 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 county and also the state does the same thing. They put everyone in the same bucket as far as consideration, not looking at the fact that the South Bay cities do not have the numbers, the COVID numbers, to justify being treated as the, as as i- in the same manner as the rest of the county. to justify being treated as the as as i- in the same manner as the rest of the county. So we asked that they look at us as with with a region-specific lens and also allow us to um to 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 make our own decisions. At obviously uh obviously following health uh the the health order guidelines. But we wanted to join with the Beach Cities Health District to to do our own monitoring and make our own decisions about this as about the the extent of the lockdown that should be um attributed to our region. That was one thing. The other thing was that we wanted to seek more funding for struggling businesses. We wanted to ask them to s- to to get access to funding as soon as possible. Um we wanted to ask them to ask the governor to set aside uh some of the tax proceeds of twenty-six billion dollars, the extra money that's available to provide money to the businesses. And in the in the letter we wrote to the governor, we said to the governor, we don't want you to tell the businesses that you're going to give them a tax deferral. We want you to give them direct money. They need money now. Tax deferral will not help them. Um and um as and and then we asked for a reversal of the board's decision to uh ban outdoor dining. When the board passed the outdoor dining, the last outdoor dining restriction, there was really no scientific basis behind it. As a matter of fact, that's what the court found, the the Superior Court found, that they had made this outdoor dining restriction. Uh but they didn't have the data to back up the fact that the surge was caused by outdoor dining. There was no proof that 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 outdoor dining caused the majority of the surge. So in this letter, we're asking them to reverse their decision. So those were the letter, that was the letter to the county. In the letter to the governor, pretty much the same thing. Um we 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 asked for um to 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 give the count, to to give as much money as possible to the struggling businesses unencumbered, not not tax deferrals, but unencumbered funds. And also the ability for a- again, to allow us to adopt our own local restrictions in our own area as opposed to uh having to abide by county-wide restrictions. The whole thing was brought about because many of the cities in the South Bay feel as though the the state just uh makes decisions with a broad brush and really doesn't consider the differences in the local regions. So this was, that's what these letters are about. And the reason that I'm bringing them before you is to ask that you also allow us to send a letter to the county and the um governor in the name of Hawthorne using these same um using these same uh elements in as as in the letters you have here. So I'll, I I'd like to open it up for discussion. I'd like to get to have letters from Hawthorne, pretty much saying the same thing. That's all I'm asking.
Uh through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I I definitely agree that um South Bay should be looked at, should be looked at under its its own lens and seeing what our numbers look like to determine, you know, what needs to be shut down and what doesn't need to be shut down.
Uh through the chair, um actually, uh uh Eric, do we know uh what's the numbers for Hawthorne? Because my understanding, I I don't know if it's correct, but Hawthorne and and uh and our neighbors, uh we have one of the, very the highest in this area.
So um I have the updated stats as of this afternoon, and I can tell you that City of Hawthorne has four thousand one hundred and thirty-four cases. And when you um, wh- when you portion that to what the the county's using is uh uh cases per one hundred thousand population.
Mm-hmm.
Uh that translates to four thousand six hundred and fifty-six cases. So for example, El Segundo um has, wi- with that same ratio, has one thousand six hundred and forty-four. Uh Gardena has four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven, uh Hermosa Beach, two thousand three hundred and eight. Um Inglewood is a little ahead of us with four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight, all on the um the same proportion of a hundred thousand population. Uh Longdale, four thousand one hundred and sixty-two, just just below us.
Yeah, uh the only thing that that I'm concerned is that the fact that a lot of people are not taking this COVID nineteen serious. And and we have, we are located on a regional that we do not have our own health department. And we have to depend on the county health department. Uh and that is where, you know, people have to ma- make, because you know Pasadena had his own health department, so they decide. Long Beach, one health department, they decide. But when we do not have our own health department and I understand that they wanna just to look at the area of South Bay and and combine all of us together, but we have to make sure that our citizens are safe and people are, you know, doing using the mask, social distance, and are doing things according to the LA County protocol. And when we starting to stop those protocols, then we can be in trouble. So that is my concern that I have to wave about about sending letters to the county or even to the state. Because right now, we see this pandemic i- is still, right now, the LA County, we have one point seven uh basically for the uh uh oh, what do you call, not urgent care, what do you call it? Hospitalization. So we are the one of the lowest, the real most on the point that we don't have no more beds left in LA County to accommodate no more COVID patients. Uh so that's the kind of thing that we, we can still, you know, support our business. Uh make sure that, like, I would love to have, you know, outdoor dining, but they would have to do it on a safe way. Because when you see those people go out and eat outdoor, they take their mask off. And they 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 eat the entire meal without no mask, they drink. So those are the kind of things that we need to deal with. How to educate our constituents before we put them in danger. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
That's my comment.
All right, so.
Well, we don't, we don't have to necessarily adopt all of the elements of these letters. Um is there anything that we could all agree on that we could send from the City of Hawthorne? For example, do we all agree that we should ask the governor for unencumbered funds for our for our businesses?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that definitely I will agree with that. So we can, yeah, like I said, you know, if we can maybe come up with our own letter to say that our business need help. They need money in their pocket, not through uh incentive or tax incentives, but they need dollars amount that would be able to compensate for all their losses. Yeah, that I will agree, Ms. Valentine.
To the chair?
Yes.
Um there, there is already money that's allocated uh through this uh from the state to businesses and um uh they have, those businesses have to apply for those dollars. It's not something that they're gonna give it to us and then we're gonna, you know, allocate it to the businesses. Um that's, that's not how it works. Um and there's two programs. Um two programs, from what I understand, um they have, from what I understand, they have uh it's called, oh, let me see if I could find it. There's a a PPE loan, which can be used to help with payroll up to seventy-five percent. And then there's a um an ELDL, which is an emergency disaster loan. Um and that's, that's um, that's one that Congress had to change up because there was a lot of uh cheaters and uh bad players. But uh for the most part, um even the Small Business Administration that provided loans. Um what we could do is definitely get the resources, get the information, correct information, and get that out to our businesses. Um I do know that all of our businesses are hurting currently. I do try to um buy local and assist those restaurants. But without a um health, health, health and human services component or something that um we could speak to on the safety of uh opening it up or not, um I don't, I don't necessarily believe or agree that we're there yet. Um and and Mayor Potem Montero is absolutely right. There's other cities such as Pasadena. And I believe Orange County that has their own um Department of Health and their own physicians um that are uh in charge. So we're in a, we're in a desperate situation when we ha- we're under the authority of LA County as the lead agency that is the one that's ultimately making the decisions on whether or not we open or not. And obviously, you saw that they extended the stay-home order, so I don't see that uh that changing anytime soon. Um and that's across the board, not just business, the uh food. We're talking barbers, hairstylists, um other, other type of uh non-essential uh services that folks would love to to have and get a hold of, but unfortunately, um we've been told otherwise.
Um I um, I'm, I I I understand that there's loan money available. When I have talked to businesses, they've said things like they, loan, loans won't help them. They they're not looking for loan money, they're looking for grant money. And my understanding is that there is extra money available. Um the tax, the there there were twenty-six billion dollars in tax proceeds that was available from the state. And we were asking, in the letter, we were asking the governor to use some of that money to provide relief to local businesses. I understand that there's loan money available. The problem is, a lot of these businesses they're in such bad straits that loans won't help them. Um they they need to be, they need to be uh they need to have grant money available to them. So that's what we would be actually asking for.
But but to the chair again, um but what we need to understand are, these are small mom and pop shops. These are small restaurants that don't have the staff that would uh put them uh in um in uh the qualification process in which you would need to qualify for those dollars, ultimately hoping to turn them into grants. Currently, they're they're loans, but the hope is that using those, the a percentage of that loan to make up for payroll and other PPE need uh if you could show gross receipts and show some other factors, it could ultimately grant a uh a grant uh forgiven loan. But unfortunately, and I have to say it again and again, uh I know a lot of businesses here in Hawthorne that don't have the know-how. Don't have the language, don't have the resources to fill out applications to assist their small business. And these are the ones that are hanging on by the string. And uh we need, we need to be able to just get the information for them in a packet format and guide them. Guide them how to apply. And if they said they that they don't, you know, they haven't applied, we need them to apply. That's the only way they're gonna know whether or not they qualify and whether or not it is a forgiven loan.
Uh through the chair, I I I would make a motion that uh we send the letter to the state and the county to to give assistance to the small business. And even to include maybe the cities or the South Bay car could be the vehicle to give this money away to the small business, okay? So uh so so then it will be much more manageable if the cities uh receive the money and then give it to the small business, it will be a much better way. So if we can, Ms. Valentine, come up with the, with the language, the letter to, that is identical, but a little bit different uh to send to the county and to the state, because we s- we still have to advocate for money to come to to us. And so we can be able to help the small business.
So your your suggestion is that we ask for the money to come to the city itself as a form of giving, uh okay, to 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 uh give us money for the businesses?
Yes. And then what could, you know, then we will be act, we will give this help direct to the business because we know, because we have them. They all have business license. There'll be a process.
And I, and I'm fine, I'm 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 perfectly willing to do that. Uh Mr. Um City Attorney, what is your uh opinion of that? Can we construct such a letter?
Uh yes, uh you can make a motion to authorize the uh city manager uh to compose such a letter uh based upon the discussion that you just had and that uh he'll send it out uh with all of the comments that you just mentioned.
All right.
Okay.
So I move that um that uh the council approve a letter, that the city manager send a letter uh comporting with the uh with the discussion that we just had concerning the need to send money to the city in order to distribute to the businesses in the city.
I second that.
Uh roll call vote?
Um Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Council, uh Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
All right. Next item, Mr. Patterson, Councilmember?
Uh thank you, Ms. Mayor. So for me, it's important that we make sure that uh we support our staff and that our staff has uh the proper access, or not proper access, but just access to genuine education so that they can uh succeed uh here in City Hall. And we have that, we have a greater opportunity to promote from within. And so uh I wanted to ask the city manager to reach out to the president of the University of West Los Angeles and develop a relationship whereby uh if any of our, our staff members wanted to uh pursue a master's degree, part-time mastery or even a A J D with that university. Um they would, um you know, we have a kind of formal relationship. I know they have a similar relationship with the City of Inglewood. And and I've spoken with the 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 president, um and uh uh he's agreed that he would also offer a scholarship specific to uh our employees uh to make it much more affordable of our employees to go, you know, directly with them, you know, through this relationship. So we can kind of reach out to, um, what is his name? Is uh President Robert Brown?
So um our HR team and I can can reach out and we can see uh what grows there.
Let me ask you a question. Uh our employees, do they have a tuition reimbursement program um through the city? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, yeah, hopefully, uh with that tuition reimbursement program and the scholarship that um President Brown uh has agreed to offer our employees, it really makes it very affordable for them to continue their education.
Yeah, w- we we will do that research and and outreach.
All right, so that's it.
That's it for that one. If anybody has it.
Next item?
Next item, um uh clean, we need to, we all know, we need to make sure, we need to support our city in in being clean or or being clean of Hawthorne. Uh after Christmas, after New Year, everybody has a lot of extra crap. Um people buying new toys or TVs or or whatnot. And so I want to uh discuss maybe have the city uh having a big cleanup weekend. And maybe even like a cleanup week, um where we reach out to public services. Actually, I already had a conversation with them and I have them do some s- special bulk trash pickup during this weekend. Um reach out to our homeowners association, maybe encourage them to have their own kind of a neighborhood cleanup week. Uh I know the the city clerk had planned on doing a um or want to kind of jump in with this kind of idea and doing a a neighborhood kind of cleanup as well. But maybe encourage different neighborhoods to have to kind of do their own street cleanup in addition to having public services come out and do a e-waste pickup, um bulk trash pickup, even having our our truck kind of uh go through the city to see um to help support that bulk trash pickup. And you know, this requires some communication out to the public, let them know that it's it exists. Let them know that, you know, this is gonna be a day or weekend where they can have, you know, all this, all this stuff kind of picked up or they can take it, you know, to get uh recycled or or given away. Um and even, uh I know we we've had some people talk about the unhoused population um in the, is it Dominus Canal? That, you know, may have some waste there, even ghosting through there and That, you know, may have some waste there, even go through, through there and, and pick up some whatever waste that, that, that makes sense. Um and additionally, maybe, you know, even we can um have some. Um power washing like down some of our major streets, and I was out campaigning. You know, for a few, few weeks ago, I had a couple of residents, say at one point in the past, we used to power wash down, I think one twentieth. Keep it kind of cleaner, and I, I, I'm not sure if something we go to the bases again, but we could definitely, you know, this whole first New Year. Clean up the city effort, and um yeah, I was hoping that, that, you know. You can uh work maybe even with the city, um city clerk, kind of do a whole clean weekend.
So I, I, I think that's something we can, uh our public works team can, can work through, um you know, what I would request is. Uh let us come back at the January twelfth meeting uh with what we're uh proposing for event. Um and, you know, we're, you know, being with, with the holidays and everything, um yeah, I think we wanted to have this in January. Uh I think we maybe target the weekend of, uh I mean, the last weekend of the month, I guess, the weekend of January twenty ninth. Um I, I, I think, you know, the idea of having uh, you know, a new year, new cl- uh, you know, clean Hawthorne is uh, is a great message. Um and, yeah, depending on our degrees of success, um potentially put this on the list of an annual event for next year. Um and even have uh more pl- planning and, and farther reach. Um and so uh are you agreeable with us coming back with the proposal on the twelfth?
That's fine.
Okay.
To the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just add city manager to look to maybe see if we could partner with the L A County? Um the reason I say that is because the Domingos Channel is, I believe, a, a county entity. And we need to be careful with the, you know, uh debris that could ultimately be dangerous. So hazmat, if we get hazmat, we get um, um, you know. Uh them to be um our, our. Our, our, our lead in uh, you know, any type of needles, uh. Any type of, you know, urination, refocation, things that we, that need to be removed and uh power wash. But I think it's gonna be a, a group effort, great work, uh Councilmember Patterson to address that, and you're absolutely right. We had a number of people over on Marine and um. Prairie area, homeowners there that uh, you know, inquired about some help, but yes, that's the. That's something we should do.
Uh and through the chair, um.
Go ahead.
Eric, also Caltrans. Because of all the freeways, overpass and stuff like that, you know, because most of the homeless are s- situation on those overpass. Thank you.
Alright, next item?
Uh so it says Hawth- Hawthorne app and social media budget, essentially. I really wanna just talk about the way Hawthorne communicates with the residents, I think we can do. A, a much better job, and so, uh you know, I want to ask the city manager to look into a couple of things. Uh consider a couple of things, and i- if the rest of my colleagues want to comment on it. One is developing an app for the city of Hawthorne. Something, so we don't have to depend a hundred percent on social media to get the word out, because to my understanding. We, we get the word out through word of mouth, through our digital billboard and through social media. And this gives a, a, another alternative. If a, a, a large percentage of the, of the community had a Hawthorne app in, you know, in their phone, because everybody has a phone. Um a mobile device, they can communicate directly to the city hall about bulk trash. Or about something that they're seeing on the street that's, that's not kosher. Uh communicate directly to uh the police department, maybe even pay some, some fines or some bills or some traffic tickets. Uh but it'd be a, a way that the community can communicate directly to the council. Uh directly to the city hall, directly to the police department, maybe even directly to public services. And letting us know the things that they want us to know, so they don't have to call in to the council meeting or have to. Find our email addresses, uh and then conversely, apps have push notification options. And so we, anybody that subscribes to the app or has downloaded the app, we can easily send out. Information to all those people from by a push of a button through push notifications in the app. Um so I mean, that's one thing. But i- I do think we should continue to use social media, but I think that we can do a much better job at doing so. Um, you know, when somebody posts on a business account on Facebook, for instance. Only, I don't know, five to ten percent of their followers will ever see any of those posts. Uh the way that most of those followers are going to see their posts is through a, a paid ad or boosting that post. But you look at um. There, you know, there's tens of thousands of Hawthorne residents on social media, but d- don't follow our social media pages. Um I think there should be some type of budget that goes for at least a once a week newsletter to go out to the entire city. Might cost about, it might cost about two thousand dollars, but um, you know, we have. Forty something thousand registered voters, we have hundred thou- hundred and twenty thousand total, total uh, uh residents. Um at least fifty percent are, are gonna be on Facebook and, and other shows, social media. We're gonna use those tools, we need to use them properly to make sure the message actually gets out uh to everybody, so I, I would love. Kind of discussion on maybe creating some kind of budget for that communication. And um with that, having some type of. Uh department or, or, or personnel in the city that really oversees communication to the public. Uh this, whether it be uh. The good things that, that we're doing in the police department and, and how they're acting with, with the community. To the, the great ideas our council members have, to like all the different initiatives we have, but. Um our. So, you know, somebody that's really responsible for pushing this information out uh to the community, I really believe that we do a very poor job. Of getting news out to the community, uh we can't obviously send everybody a letter, uh but I think there's a lot of other things that, that could be done. Um like what's the use of having, for instance, our, uh I would love to get some information about how our rental assistance program is going, but. I, you know, I've got an impression that a lot of people don't know it exists. Um we look at even the ads that are on our. Uh digital billboards, in my opinion, are poorly done. Um I, I saw the ad for the rental assistance program on our digital billboard, and the only reason I knew what it says is because I knew, already knew what it said. If that makes sense, I already knew that's what that ad was, so the only reason why I knew what, what it was saying. And it was able to half even see or pay attention to it, but it's very poorly designed. It's not pleasing to the eye, nobody can really read it, I think that it does no good us having, us doing these great things for the community. And the people don't know about it, and so I, I really would love to see, um, you know, what's possible to, to really bake into our budget. Um a meaningful way of communicating with the, with the, with our residents.
Through the chair? Yes, sir. So I, I think um there's, you know, quite a few things that Councilmember Patterson has brought up um that really resonate with me. Um yeah, I think that, you know, our clerks offices um ha- has, has done. Uh an admirable job of, you know, managing the social media presence for uh the city. Um however, um it's been done on a, on, on, on an informal ad hoc basis with, without a lot of budget. Um and so, uh this is something that we could certainly consider um. Uh in the spring, we're gonna be developing the new budget for the new fiscal year, um and I would, I would take um. This direction, if there's consensus from the council, to make sure that the budget we bring back um reflects um. Yeah, some dollars as far as a prior, prioritization of getting um these type, this type of information out to the community. So that, um so we are reaching as many people as we can. Uh as it relates to um having a, a department or employee that oversees communications to the public. Uh many cities have, uh have a role like that, um that's, um but that, those, that's a, it's a high uh ticket item. Um I imagine boosting uh the, the newsletters um and the posts that Councilmember Patterson um is talking about. Probably pales in comparison to the cost of, of that employee, however, if this is a priority for the city. Uh it's something we certainly can, consider as part of the new budget process as well. Um as it relates to um the accessibility of our digital um billboards. Uh I think the, the criticism, uh constructive criticism is, is noted. Uh and we will endeavor to make sure that uh what we're putting on those billboards is, is actually uh readable and accessible to the audience we're trying to reach. Um as it relates to uh an app, uh I, I think that's a great idea as well. Uh one of the components, one of the many components of the virtual city hall project uh that I've um mentioned over the last couple of meetings. Uh we are going to have uh an app uh that's gonna be available to our residents. That they're gonna be, do a lot of functionality that Councilmember Patterson is suggesting, especially being able to report. Uh pothole type issues, illegal dumping type issues, um. Uh there's G P S coordinates that are being captured by all of our residents' phones. Um you leveraging that data uh and helping us to be smarter and be able to respond. Um without suddenly have to pick up the phone and talk to a human to get that work done. And so I, I think, you know, the, uh the ask is not lost on me, um based on my conversation. Uh with some of you and other members of our staff, that certainly were, um I think we need to go as an organization. Um and we've made a, a, I think a significant step by um approving the contract, uh we just need to implement this program. And um it's gonna take, you know, um probably all of twenty twenty-one to get there, um but uh the, the, the journey starts with the first step. Um and so, you know, the other thing that, that I would uh suggest is we do have a senior deputy clerk position that we're out for recruitment for. Um and there could be some synergy uh with that, uh that position and the work that the city clerk's office is already doing. And so, you know, my intention is to be working with um him or her, uh wh- when they get here uh to the city. Uh should be perfect time for us as we're developing the budget for the new fiscal year, uh and make sure that as part of that budget, we're bringing back. Uh I, I think a, a, a very cogent strategy for the council to consider on how we're going to uh be communicating better uh with our residents.
Uh to the chair?
Yeah.
Uh Eric, uh think about this communication person is part of the. Already, you know, we have the, our channel twenty-two, right? Uh maybe because I thi- uh I understand, you know, you're going to do a little reorganization. Uh with, with the communication downstairs. Uh maybe think about to add something on it, so since we have, we have the uh channel twenty-two, we have the, so the. Maybe what the Mister Patterson is saying is, is, is maybe to bring more stuff into that department, to make it more. Uh a communication, not just the, the T V or, or the channel twenty-two, or, or the, or the uh. Or the YouTube or the, but to come up with a very strong communication department. That will be communicated with the, with the, with the city on a regular basis, you know, but just by Facebook or by. Uh um uh newsletter on, 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 on the internet or in the net or something like that, you know. Email to all the citizens of Hawthorne, so something like that of. I think maybe you already started to, to try to reorganize the, our, our, our communication, so maybe add to that.
Yes, we can certainly leverage uh the direction that we're already trying to head.
Yeah, and also keep in mind that uh Ms Valentine was the champion of the fiber network for the South Bay car. So we have a high-speed internet coming, right?
Right, right.
We can have all of that, you know, incorporate together, so, so we can communicate better with our constituents.
Noted.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, so that it?
Okay, one last item.
No, that was it, uh oh, the next page, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh so number forty-seven, question is what can we do, what can the city do to be more business-friendly? Um essentially. Um I, I think everybody on the council agrees that Hawthorne needs to be business-friendly, this is a new kind of concept. And wanna make sure that we invite quality businesses to our city, make sure that they, they wanna be here as an easy pathway. Um I, I, I'm, I'm curious why we're not business-friendly, what, what's in the way? And I was hoping, uh Mr. City Manager, you can do some kind of assessment through the process of. Uh a, 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 a business or entrepreneur calling the city and saying how many install, we open the city. All through the process of opening up for business and getting licensed, and where are the friction points? You know, where, where we, where we losing businesses? Um where is it taking longer than it should throughout that process? I remember a gentleman who, who opened a Blaze Pizza. Had said, you know, this wasn't his first location that he opened, but it for sure was the hardest experience he's had. Uh in opening your business, and he was just amazed at how difficult that process was. Um yeah, I've heard other instances where people have called in, say, I wanna open X Y business in the city, and they've just kind of been turned away, like, oh no, you can't do that. You know, there's no conversation of, well, this is maybe what you could do or should look at, or um, you know. But yeah, if, we can look and see where, where the friction points are, you know, where, you know, where is it taking longer than it should? Um uh, you know, where the, where the leaks in our pipeline?
Um through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could just um chime in on that, uh Councilmember Patterson. Um one of the things I, I've, I've advocated for, for a long time is that we have an economic development director. And I think that someone who is dedicated. In some way to actually doing exactly what you're saying. You know, to have a person who's dedicated to bringing those businesses in. E- greasing the skids so they can easily get through the system. And working with them to, to see how we can maximize their resources. Um and also someone to bring in business, I think we really need that. Um I know we've in the past not been able to do it because of budgetary constraints. But I wonder whether we could look at perhaps having someone on a commission basis. Or someone on a part-time basis, maybe there's something we can afford to do, but I think that's, I think we need that. Um that type of employee to actually um, to actually do what uh. What Councilmember Patterson is suggesting.
The Councilmember, I, I totally agree, the way, in my mind, I envision an economic, economic development director, somebody that really. Raise the business to our front door, but in addition to that, we wanna make sure the whole process of going through. From submitting an application, plan check, approval block.
Exactly.
That automatically it works well, but I, I review one million percent, I believe that. City manager had found some money in our budget through some, was it some COVID grant stuff? To get uh somebody on a contract basis?
Yeah, so um, you know, to, to jump in on, on the conversation, um yeah, uh. The, the pain points that you're expressing are, are not lost on me. Um I, I, I think I've heard this from nearly every uh council member uh that's currently sitting on the council. Um and unfortunately heard it from our business community and our development community as well. Um and so uh the, the problem is not lost on me or the staff. Um yeah, as Councilmember Patterson uh recalled, uh over the summer, the council did allocate some funds for us to start working on this issue. Uh we are starting a contract with a consultant um who's very um well-respected in the, the South Bay and Greater Los Angeles area. Um in the areas of economic development um and uh planning and community development. Uh and so that study um is uh, contract's already signed, uh we're hoping to get the, the study actually moving and the work getting done. And hopefully those results come back to the council by the end of the fiscal year. Um but I'm anticipating that that study is going to be looking at uh the A to Z process on, you know. Um how an idea becomes a business that provides uh, uh service to the community. Um and, and what are the, the pain points within the city hall process that need to be better aligned or um. Uh approach differently to make that um uh much more um expedited. Um and not being hung up um on uh unnecessarily, and so that's a contract that, that's currently underway. Um as it relates to um having uh staff that could do economic development work. Uh I, I think that uh in, in a perfect world, we would be able to do that. Um and so what I wanna do is really look at this study that we're, we're getting through to see. If, I, I don't wanna come back with a request uh to the council for, to fund a position. Um if we've got internal um lack of alignment issues that we're not addressing internally, because. Um you know, in, in theory, to have our existing departments and existing staff function uh more correctly. Or in a best practice manner shouldn't cost more dollars, it just, um it's, it's ar- architecting new procedures um and having the will to implement. Uh and so definitely wanna make sure we're doing that work first. Um and but certainly, you know, as we're uh preparing a budget proposal for the council to consider this spring. Um uh, uh it's been impressed upon me that we need to be considering uh. It is an economic development resource, whether it's director position or a manager position or coordinator position. Or maybe a hi- hybrid of a, a few of these positions we've talked about tonight, um that can be someone that can carry that water. Uh that's something we definitely need to be looking at. Um and additionally, you know, compare that to a consultant contract as Councilmember Valentine suggested. And making sure that we're really just getting the, the right value for. And making sure that we're really just getting the the right value for the results. And so, you know, I really, I I I welcome this. These these comments and what what I'm sensing is consensus on direction and this is something that we need to be taking ground on. And if you got further questions for me about what where I'm intending to to bring us, please let me know.
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for bringing this to the light, but Eric knows that even during his interview as a city manager, I told him. Can you take a cut so we can hire an economic developer? You remember that? Because it was discussion that we didn't have the money. But we always said that we wanted to bring somebody, like you said, even if it was a consultant that who knows about economic development, about real estate development. So all those kinds of things. But you said something that is very important for us to keep in mind. Education to our staff from the planning, from the building and safety, from the inspection. That it should not take six to a year to open a Chinese place or taco place, right? So so we have talked about this thing too. How can we expedite and how can that process? It is quickly because sometimes, you know, I have a lot of people complain like Mr. Perez said, like the the piece of glass. But we have, you know, a taco place that, you know, he had to pay one year of leasing before he can generate any income. Because of the process, right? So that's what I'm saying. You said something very good that you need to fix some stuff in-house and especially to to educate. How to be more, I don't know, I'd say compassion, but to have an open-minded. To make sure that these people can understand what what our needs are and what they can expect them to do. And give them a timeline that it expedites at ninety days or in or in thirty days, this is what has to be happened. So I'm glad that you on that, you on that, and I'm glad to see that you already started to think about. How to bring to the new budget twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So we can begin to to put Hawthorne on the right track that because we want to bring more business. Not, you know, restaurants, manufacturing jobs. So we need to create more jobs because that's the way we're gonna take people out of poverty. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to to respond a little more to that, yeah, I wanted to say that, you know, I think we've got. An excellent staff that really wants to provide great service to our community. And it's it's my job to convey the council's wishes to our department heads and collectively with our executive leadership. Leading our employees to understand it, you know, customer service in this area. Business friendliness are are some of the most important things we can be doing as an organization. And so that is that is the direction we're gonna we're gonna continue to move towards.
And to the chair, again, make sure Eric never say no, just say there will be a way. Let's let's explore it together, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Alright, let's move on to. Individual council members' reports. We're going to ask for Councilmember Andy Reyes English.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just real quickly say that I've never been a fan of a heavy agenda. We had some thirty items and some seven items of agreement and contracts. And it takes a lot of time to go through each of those items to get really. You know, you have to vet them and you have to make the ask. You have to make those questions and, you know. I'm not sorry for it. I think it's makes me a better person for asking. And getting clarification so that the public out there, the residents of Hawthorne knows precisely. What is happening in the city of Hawthorne, especially with an agenda so heavy tonight. Let me also just provide a directive. I'd like to see. Staff make an assessment of our parking situation here in our city. I know it's been a heavy discussion. I'd like to make an assessment to see how we could maybe expand parking by use of. Streets that are using one-sided parking, streets that are large enough to possibly open the other side for parking. I think it's important that we also utilize the tools that we have today to ensure that folks are parking. Appropriately and giving their neighbor sufficient parking also versus hogging it all up. And so I know there's the divisions that are striped on the street to make sure vehicles are parked. In their space. I also understand that you have to pay for that. I want to make a directive to see how maybe we could waive some of those fees and implement more of those types of. Of prints on the street so that everyone has the appropriate box in which to park in. Also, with regards to COVID in our stay-home orders, I want to ask if we could possibly do a soft parking enforcement. For the next month, especially for the time that they said, LA County has said and the state. That we we will be stay-home orders through Christmas. So I'd like to see how we could maybe implement that with regards to parking enforcement. Again, there's people that are home, there's people that are currently not working, have lost their jobs. And are suffering and we can't put and continuously put. Debt on top of their already stressful households. So I want to see how we could work on that. And and also, you know, this is new to me, this is new to all of us, this new world. This tech world that we're working with, this Zoom, thing that we call Zoom. If we could please be more aware when speaking to introduce yourself and the department that you're with, that would be most helpful. And then I want to invite everyone and share that in partnership with Northgate Market. Here Hawthorne on Thursday, the seventeenth. At the Hawthorne Memorial Center, the roundabout in front, it's a drive-through, Santa Drive-Thru. It's for vehicles only. There's absolutely no walk-ups. There's absolutely no parking. You pop your trunk, you drive up, Santa puts a toy in your trunk and you and you go off. It's similar to the Halloween event that was hosted there. And I'd like to thank Northgate Market in advance for having some twenty five, or excuse me, it's gonna be twelve hundred and fifty toys. Until either all toys are given given away, first come, first served. I also want to thank them for helping during Operation Gobble, giving. Vouchers for families to go and get a turkey at their grocery store, Northgate Market off of Rosecrans and Prairie. They're a very giving store and helping as much as they can. And let me tell you, there's a lot of people. Asking for a whole lot from a whole lot of different organizations and groups. I also want to. Thank LA County Federation of Labor and what they're doing to help families. I know that they were helpful here in Hawthorne at one point. And also the Democratic Party and everyone's efforts just to, you know, the help and the need is so great. And just want to thank them for that. And I also want to thank. Our current Water Board Member, Mr. Don Deere, for your words of encouragement with regards to water. Water reliability and your 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 congratulations. Thank you so much for that. But that that in a nutshell should do it. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on a couple of those items, Councilmember English, relating to parking. The, you know, assessing parking in the city, I I I think that's an issue. One of my plans for the next budget is to actually bring a proposal for us to do a complete parking study of the entire city. And really look at our issues holistically. So with with your permission, I'd like to bring that back as part of the budget process. And then as it relates to waiving parking key application fees, this is something that our Public Works Department will work on. And we'll bring a proposal back for the council to consider on the twelfth. And then as it relates to having a relaxation of our parking enforcement. I'm gonna ask our police department to look into that and we'll get information back to the council later this week on how we plan to handle that for the rest of the month.
And just to make note and for the record, this is constituents that are reaching out. Have expressed their needs and so. I am the messenger to the rest of my colleagues on what's being. Told out there and said and or not, and the help is great. So thank you.
And I haven't mentioned our city clerk. But if our city, I think our city clerk's referring to the city council members. And we don't have a treasurer, right? But we're going to go to our net, our former treasurer, Councilmember David Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a number of things. Directs to the city manager. Can I get? Updates to what's happening in our commissions? We have a number of commissions. They have meetings. Can I get like the monthly kind of report or or minutes or something, some kind of updating on on what they're. Discussing, deciding, approving. I'd like to get a quarterly update of the, how many ADUs are are being approved in the city? I like a monthly update from the planning licensing department as far as what's happening in our business community, like what's being. Well, you know, what's going on, like, you know. Who's applying for development, who's applying to to bring business to the city, how that process is going. New businesses that have gotten licenses, just some type of general update about what's happening in that area. I I would like a report on all of our tax rates, you you know, UUT, sales tax, TOT tax. And how that compares to the region. I know that probably reports might have been done in the past. And but I'd like to know when it comes to our tax rate, how much of our taxes are earmarked for specific. Purposes are, you know, like for police or fire or whatever. Might get an update of how the rental assistance program is going, how much money has been, is is still available to. To to give out. Just want to address a couple of things regarding the red light camera abstain because I just didn't hear a strong argument. As to why. I'm a person not a fan of red light cameras. I don't pay those tickets at all and nothing bad's ever happened to me. I don't cover the city has a bunch of, has a bunch of them, but. I'm a big stickler on numbers and. There being some type of. Context to numbers. And so there was a few numbers thrown out there that that. You know, it didn't make sense for me, to me, I I needed, you know, I asked a few questions, but I I didn't get the answer that I needed. As far as Rena numbers, I I'm curious, how can we? Challenge the methodology methodology that's used? So I don't know if I can use some fresh mathematics, how is that possible? That we can we can challenge that? I was accused from item number twenty eight. While there wasn't really. Any kind of effect on my personal finances, I do a lot of family and friends who apply for the city. City housing and some may end up in city housing and some may ask me for money. So, you know, I want to not participate in that particular item. As far as the medical director. It it really made me think about. Is there any money out there? COVID money out there that the city can use for the residents specifically as far as increasing testing. You know, getting out information and education about COVID. Yeah, I I have a, you know, really mission this to the public, but I I had contracted COVID. Shortly after the election and and took about twenty days from the time I started feeling sick. Till I got a a negative testing. And, you know, stuck in the house for a long time going crazy. But there there's a lot of things that we don't know about. Okay, let's say you got it, what do you do next? And so, you know, you know, there's a lot of COVID money floating around. And we've gotten some of it for cer- certain things, but I want to make sure that we're trying to see what COVID money is out there that we can utilize. For communication with the public about it for. You know, increasing testing opportunities for people. Additionally, I I, you know, I agree with Councilmember Valentine brought up with sending a letter out to the state. For for monies for our small business. I would like there to be some type of communication to our president-elect and our congressional representatives. About having money provided to small cities, specifically cities like Hawthorne. That we can use to support our business community. So like you look at Manhattan Beach, they. When when his last order came out that that restricted outdoor dining, what they did is put out public benches. On the on the street that patrons of these restaurants, they can choose to just sit there on their own. And eat their takeout, if that makes sense. They can go to a restaurant, get food for takeout and just go sit on a bench. That was placed right there on the sidewalk or or in the street. And so, you know, we need money so that we can support our business community and help them to operate. And and so I love to to send send another letter requesting. And as far as the, oh, yeah, the part, the the. The red light camera stuff. Got a whole email from Mr. Jim Listener who had a lot of interesting questions. One of them, he said, ask the staff to explain why. The limit lines for westbound traffic at Rosecrans and Hendry haven't placed so far west. I think that's an interesting question. If somebody can provide me and answer that question and provide him and answer that question, that'd be great. Oh. Our quarterly investment report was somewhere in the agenda. And one thing I I noticed in looking at that, we've made a lot of money on our money over the last few years and I attribute it to. You know, interest rates are higher, we had a lot more cash to do something with, but we've actually been putting our money to use. In smart ways. It's made a tremendous impact on the amount of money that that the city's received. That we can use for other purposes, you know, we've our our our. Money that we've earned our money is, you know, seated a half million dollars. A year over the last couple of years and, you know, I distribute it mostly to to. Doing smart things with the money, putting putting money to work. I remember in a conversation I had, I I don't know when it was, this year or last year. With the city manager and the finance director about our cash management strategy of not holding too much cash. In checking and and being able to put some money in savings where we had a higher yield, we got no interest in checking. At the time, we got two percent in our in our checking. I remember I had, actually, I went to a treasury conference. Which I super support all of our staff going to pursue continuing education, participating in 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 relevant conferences. But I went to a treasury conference, our banking partner pulled me aside to tell me about how we're not maximizing our sweep account and our savings account. And, you know, I brought that back and 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 some changes have been made. But I would like to know, or I'd like there to be a formal policy about how we manage our cash. About, I I don't, if if our monthly outflow is two, three million dollars a month, we don't need thirty million dollars in checking. Right? We can put some money, we can put some money in savings and earn some interest on that money and transfer that money over. As needed, like, you know, I talk about all my finances, but I keep very little money in my checking account. I keep a lot of money in other accounts. And when I need to spend money for bills, I just transfer money money over. And I think that's something that that we should make sure we're doing. And so I'd like to see some type of. Cash management strategy of how, at what point do we are and how much are we putting in in savings? And at what point and how much are we choosing to put into longer-term vehicles? To make sure we're we're we're, you know, we're maximizing that money. If you look at our numbers over the last few years, our our return on our investments went from twenty thousand a year. To over a half a million dollars a year and and that's in part doing to. To actually doing something smart with the money. Okay, that's it. That's all I got.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to to follow up on the 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 feedback and and direction. You know, my my understanding is a lot of cities have their commissions, the minutes for the commission meetings. They just are included as consent items in the the city council packets. So if that's something that would be helpful for the council, we can do that and now keep you abreast of the work that's happening there. As it relates to a quarterly update on ADU approvals, monthly update on. Planning and business license applications and inability to monitor all the activity in the city. You know, one of the things we're gonna be working towards with the new year is getting regular reports out of our departments compiled. Not only so that we can run the business well, but that we can provide that information to the council. Um, and so that you understand, uh, what, what's going on. And so, um, you know, Councilmember Patterson, I'd like to include, uh, the specific asks you have in the more, um, comprehensive. Uh, approach that we're trying to take, um, and I think that's gonna be, uh. Your feedback is, is gonna be useful for us to actually get that information, uh, that you're looking for. Uh, a- as it relates to, to tax rates and how we compare to the region. Um, I, I think this is something we could probably tackle in, in the next year's budget. I mean, I think there's gonna be, uh, high levels of analysis we're gonna wanna do. Um, and we've got, uh, consultants available to us to do that work, um, but, uh, if we can wait till next fiscal year, I think that's something we could. We could include as it relates to taxes being earmarked.
But I think we have that, that information, I, I've seen that produced at council meeting in the past as far as those. It might be something that's, I think we, we have it, but go ahead.
Well, it, so if we have that, we, we can definitely, um, present that. Yeah, as it relates to taxes earmarked for specific, specific purposes, uh, as part of the budget presentation, uh, this spring. Uh, we can definitely talk about our revenue streams and which ones are restricted and which ones, um, the council has discretion, uh, to use. In January, uh, we're planning to come back with an update on the emergency rental assistance grant program, and so we'll definitely get those answers on how much funds are available. Um, we can get you information, uh, to answer the question that Mr. Listener has, uh, has asked of you. Uh, about the, the limit line there. Um, it's understood that, uh, contact with numbers make, is, is much more useful to everybody that's trying to understand the number, and so we can do that. Um, as we're presenting, uh, further, uh, data. Um, as it relates to challenging the, the Renet, uh, methodology, uh, the city actually, uh, sent a letter to. SCAG, um, at their request of Councilmember Valentine, um, asking them to openly challenge, uh, the, the formula. And essentially litigate this issue with the state, and so we're on record with that right now. Um, as it relates to, to COVID funding, uh, that can be used for our residents to do testing and education. Uh, I think their request is, is, is very understood. Um, yeah, I will say that we continue to allow the county to use the memorial center, um, as, uh, you know, ground zero in, in Hawthorne to do testing. And, uh, we anticipate that, uh, request is gonna continue and that we provide that facility, uh, for the foreseeable future. Um. Yeah, as it relates to a letter to, uh, the president and congressional representatives, um, I'd like to talk to you, uh. Offline about that and get a better understanding of, of what we want to do. And perhaps we bring that back, uh, at the January twelfth meeting for the council to consider.
Oh, yeah, let me just jump in real quick, uh, I just saw some notes. Uh, as far as money's available to small, small businesses, uh, the PPP grant, that ended back in August. Um, the EIDL loan ends December twenty-first. I know a little about that, cause I, I, I helped a lot of my clients with those, those applications. Um, and so we definitely need more monies outside of those things from the federal government to support our, our business community.
Uh, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
On the note about the federal money. Right now, remember that the Congress of the United States have already passed the, the bill to give money to the small cities. To help it all, all programs, but it's been holding on the Senate floor. Because the, the Republicans do not wants to give money to the small cities. So that is where the impasse is, that is what they have not passed any bill to give help to the people. Of the United States for unemployment, for small business, more money for small business. None of the, or, none of that have passed is because there is a dispute between Democrats and Republicans. That the Republicans do not wants to send money to the cities. That's because the Democrats like, like our Congresswoman and, and all the Democrats have already voted yes. To give us millions of dollar, but the Republican is holding that bill hostage, he called hope. The Republican Senate have not voted on that, so we hope that we'll take the Senate in January. So then that bill will be passed and then we'll have money. So you need to contact your Republican friends.
What, what Republicans are.
I'm not saying you. I'm just saying, they're the one who's holding that, that bill.
Through the chair. Just, yeah, just one more follow-up on Councilmember Patterson's comments, um, yeah, as it relates to formal cash management policy, uh, this is something I'll review and, um. And, and we can, uh, either create or bring an update, uh, to the council, you know, in the new year.
Okay, one, one last thing as far as the whole, uh. A Rosecrans and Hendry, um, gentleman said that. We can ask the county to review the signal timing, um, is that something that we can do?
So, that, that's something that, um. So, so yes, we could have the county, county do that. My understanding is the county actually maintains those signals, so that, so they, they, they set it to our specifications as long as it complies.
Yeah, yeah, to the chair, I believe, you know, the, uh, uh, Croquet did, offer Croquet did say that, that they do not control those. Those timer on those lights, it's, it's the call trends and the counting.
Correct.
Good, so we don't control that.
Awesome. All right, Mayor Protem Montero, you're next.
All right, okay, so, uh, wow, yeah, thank you, it's, it's been a long meeting. But we, we had to do this because it's the end of the year, so we have to get all these bills, uh, approved. Um, I'm glad to see that, you know, uh, we on the same pace as the, the, as the new, uh, council members, uh, English and Patterson. Because, um. I asked for the traffic study and the parking study from, uh, and, and Eric has been working on that. And it was my goal that we, the city would go and do tea. The tea parking in everybody's resident in front of their sidewalk, so they don't need to pay that twenty dollar or ten dollar fee. So, so then they will have the priorities to, to park on the, in front of their house instead of the neighbor two blocks away, something like that. So I'm glad that we're on the same pace of that, and the other thing that is so amazing, uh, that, uh, uh, Mr. Patterson is asking. I already talked to Eric that I would love to see a, a city manager, uh, report. Uh, on, on a regular basis, you know, maybe every two weeks or every month. Uh, that have all the other departments, uh, outcomes and challenge for, for us and to know. What is going on in, in each department, because, uh, we have these meetings. Uh, he just have a consent calendar, uh, but we don't know what actually has been going on, on those. Uh, in each department or the challenge they're having, so the city manager should give us a report on, on a regular basis. Uh, and, and he, and he did agree with me on that, so I'm glad that, that he's working on that. And, and, uh, again, you know, uh, Mr. Patterson was right on the money. Um, just to, uh. Just to acknowledge the, the red, the red light cameras, yes, uh, we, we, I receive about, uh, six to seven email. So I read all of them, uh, so, uh, and I told some, I replied that I was going to make a, a, a decision. Based on our police department recommendation and taking all consideration of their objective. Uh, but when I analyze, uh, is the safety of our pedestrians? Because, uh, we have a lot of community members complain about people speeding in our streets. So those red light cameras are there to protect, not just to protect, but, but to protect themselves. So slow down and, and watch for the, for the yellow light and don't, don't run to the red, to the red camera, so. Uh, the safety of our constituent and the health and the safety is very important to us, so that is where we're trying to, to bring. Technology, uh, to protect our citizens. I just wanna say that, um. Like, uh, the toy drive that's gonna be happening at the memorial center on the seventeen. On the twenty-second, also I'm having a, a drive-through, uh, that's gonna have, uh, food. Two hundred and forty boxes of food that is gonna be donated thanks to the Rotary, uh, uh, LA X and Hawthorne Rotary. And also I'm gonna give some gift cards for Target for people to go buy toys or clothing. Uh, so, uh, it's by invitation only, uh, because most of the keys are referred by the Hawthorne School District. But if you need food or some toys, uh, just contact me or contact, uh, our, uh, Rebecca. Uh, and to put you on the list, because it's not just a walk off the street, so it's a drive-through, so you have to be on the list, okay? So on the twenty-second, from two to four P M, uh, and it's gonna be at the South Campus, uh. So all of us working together, giving people, uh, what they need, you know, because we know a lot of people struggle out there, so food is important. And then we wanna give a smile to the children, so they have something to cheer on Christmas Day. Um, I wanna wish everybody a happy and safe holidays. A Merry Christmas to all of you out there, uh, be safe. And we know, we know a lot of people struggling, small business from families. Uh, so our heart goes with you, so anything that we can do, I know, don't, don't be afraid, call, um, because. We as the seat of a good neighbor, so we're trying to help everyone, uh, and we know that it's Christmas. And we already have begin to see the vaccine is, is out there for the healthcare workers. Uh, so I know the, in January, we're gonna have for the first responders and, and teachers. And then by the end of March, April, maybe for the entire population, so, um, whole type. Even, uh, we know some, like Mr. David Patterson said, that people get COVID, they don't know what to do, you know, so they have to stay home, you know? Uh, so a lot of people struggle, so, so be patient and social media. Find out anything you have to do about COVID and the vaccine and don't be afraid of the vaccine. Uh, because I know some people say that I'm not gonna take it and I'm not gonna be the guinea pig. But the vaccine is, is the one who's going to put the end on this pandemic, so God bless and again, happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so, um, Hawthorne Business Expo, uh, twenty twenty-one is coming. Even though it's going to be a little bit different than what you're used to, it's going to be a virtual town hall. Uh, we're going to have a keynote speaker, Tim Berry, uh, who's going to discuss lean business planning. We're going to have two panels, uh, panel one will be discussing community and government resources. Assisting businesses survive COVID nineteen. We've already got our panel to, uh, together and, uh, our own city manager is going to be a participant in that panel. Um, panel two will be how my business reinvented itself after COVID nineteen. Where the panelists are actually our own businesses telling their own survival stories. So that should be very interesting, I think everyone will enjoy that. We're trying something new because we had to reinvent ourselves, just like the businesses had to reinvent themselves. We hope this will be, this will work, we don't know for sure, but all of our committee is very excited to see, see where it goes. And we're going to have entertainment for the first time, uh, we're going to have a comedian and a singer. To kind of liven things up and, uh, add something because you are. Put in the position of staring at a screen for four hours and so we, we figured you should have something fun to look at during the course of that time. So, um, log on to HawthorneBusinessExpo.com for further details. The website will give you all the information you need and will also give you instructions as to how to register. To sign up to be an attendee, because unfortunately, unlike our usual event. Where you could just walk in, this one you actually have to register to attend because it is online. So, um, I would like to, um. Uh, I would like to ask my council colleagues to concur that we can, uh, put our ad on the website. For the Hawthorne Business Expo and also to on the electronic billboard, may I have concurrence?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, uh, Councilmember Valentine, uh, the council voted on that earlier this year to do so.
Okay, so you're saying that that vote counted for this as well?
Yes, it, it was for January twenty twenty-one.
Right, okay, twenty-seven, January twenty-seven.
Yes.
Twenty-one, all right. All right, um. And I don't really have anything else, I'd like to say thank you to the staff. Um, I'd like to say thanks to Eric Lee, our city manager, for an excellent job. For, for, for providing us with all of this wonderful detailed information that we've been able to discuss tonight. Thank you for that, thank you to our staff who's worked so hard all year. We haven't been able to see each other, but that doesn't mean that I don't look at what you've done and be, and I, and not, and I'm extremely appreciative. Of all of the hard work that you've put in, so thank you to the staff, Merry Christmas to all of you and to all of your families. And have a wonderful, uh, wonderful holiday season. And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays as well, have a wonderful holiday season, thank you.
Okay, um, so thank you all for being here, for all the residents. To, for, for listening to the meetings, watching us out there, um, for, uh, contributing with your feedback. And, uh, it's looking good, I think we're going to have a lot of things, great things to do and work on as a group. Uh, we have great staff that's supporting us, um, at all the different offices and we have a plan going forward. Uh, so I'm pretty sure our council, our new council member colleagues have thought of some of these great ideas that we wanna bring forth. So we're excited to continue hearing from them and our, uh, our current mayor Protem and our. Councilmember Valentine as well, things that they've been working on and new ideas that they're presenting, so I'm really excited that we're all going to. Be working together as a great unit, um, as we saw today, actually, today is really a good example. I think there's more commonalities than that. Ninety-nine percent, ninety-eight percent or something. So I think that's a good sign, I think that's great, and I just think, um, everybody has an opportunity to bring it, present their ideas and have those ideas, uh. Rise to the top, so definitely, I'm excited and I'm willing to support my council colleagues in all these different things. Okay, uh, I think, uh, there's no sense in regurgitating some of the topics that we've talked about. Um, I guess these are some, some of the topics that were brought today during this discussion items. And during the council meeting, it happened brought forth before, but now that our council member colleagues. Uh, our new council member colleagues are here, they're able to give their take on it more openly and more directly as, uh, the council members themselves, so. Welcome to Councilmember Angie Grace English and welcome to Councilmember David Patterson. Okay, so, uh, if there's not, nothing further from staff. Um, let's try to end this meeting right now because it's already ten o'clock.
Do we have a closed session?
Yes. Do we have a closed session? Okay, well.
Council, there's, uh, it, it is ten o'clock and, uh, the urgency associated with this item has changed. And I can consult with the city attorney and we can, we can bring this item back in January, uh, if it's warranted at that time.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So this meeting is now adjourned.